Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm School Committee Chair Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask my colleagues to unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Lopera? Mr. Mehta?
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
All members are present with the exception of Ms. Lopera.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the November 2nd meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. We will now turn on the interpretation feature. Click the gold icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. Because of a Zoom update, those that need ASL interpretation can now select the ASL channel. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment close today at 4:30. Please make sure you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to remain, to rename yourself so that the committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin, I want to give a brief update about our agenda. Due to ongoing discussion between all parties, the district is postponing its presentation on the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the cafeteria workers until the next committee meeting on November 16. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26th School Committee Meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, please call the roll.
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Ms. Lopera? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned last week, I want to begin by sharing some of the good news highlights in my report. There are so many positive things happening across our schools and classrooms every day. To begin, I'd like to share a few things on athletics. The city championship finals were played in volleyball, girls soccer, and boys soccer on Friday. This happened on October 28th and on Saturday, October 29th. In volleyball, the New Mission Titans defeated the John D. O'Brien Tigers three to nothing to win the 2022 championship. New Mission's Courtney Sarfo, who's class of 2023, was named the volleyball city championships most outstanding player. Both teams will participate in the MIAA statewide tournament beginning this week. The championship games for both boys and girls soccer featured the East Boston Jets and Latin Academy Dragons. Both games were exciting from start to finish, with Latin Academy winning the city championship in both sports with a final score of one to nothing. Latin Academy's Majella Kremen, also class of 2023, was named girls soccer city championships most outstanding player. Latin Academy's Fernando Vargas, again, class of 2023, was named boys soccer's most outstanding player. We're incredibly proud of all of our scholar athletes, how they competed and how they played with one another as peers. All championship games were broadcasted by Boston City TV and BNN, and they are also available on YouTube. The cheerleading city championship will be held this Sunday, November 6th, at the Reggie Lewis Track and Athletic Center, beginning at 11:00 a.m. Once again, congratulations to all of our amazing athletes. I would like to give the committee an update on school safety and student support services. As I shared with you last week, the safety of our students and staff are a critical part of our strategic priorities. It's one of the main things that keeps me up at night. Our team has been really focusing on this area, both in prevention and intervention and support whenever there's an issue. Last week, I attended a meeting with the mayor, city staff, and community leaders at Greater Love Tappanacle Church to discuss the recent acts of violence happening throughout our neighborhoods. It was affirming to talk about the impactful strategies and interventions that together we could employ to help mitigate the issues that our young people are facing. Additionally, I was able to testify at the Public Safety and Criminal Justice hearing convened by our city counselors, at-large Michael Flaherty and Erin Murphy. I spoke alongside my colleagues, Jody LG, who's our senior director of Succeed Boston, Stacia Campbell, who's Assistant Superintendent for Operations, Chief Cokely, Chief of Safety Services, and Jillian Kelton, who's our Chief of Student Support. At the hearing, we shared our best practices around bullying prevention, and we shared information about our hotline system and what families can do to report bullying when it happens at their school. As a reminder, the Safe Space and Bullying Prevention Hotline is 617-592-2378. At the hearing, we also talked about the high levels of chronic absenteeism that we saw last year and are still seeing in some of our schools this year and the need for building authentic relationships and reestablishing connections with our students. This is what is needed for this moment of urgency for our students and families. We are continuing to build out a multifaceted plan that we have and will continue to roll out in the coming months. We expect the Council of Great City Schools' safety recommendations later this month, and we'll be presenting those recommendations along with aspects of our initial plan in December to School Committee. Dropout reengagement, a focus on reducing chronic absenteeism, building up educational options and alternative education for students, workforce development and youth jobs, peer mediation, increasing out-of-school time opportunities for youth, training and use of trauma-sensitive and restorative justice practices, investments in improved security technologies, and much more will be part of that plan. I look forward to sharing more safety updates with the committee and with our public in the weeks to come. In the world of our SIP, which is our systemic improvement plan, we remain diligent doing our work. We submitted our latest set of deliverables yesterday on November 1st. We submitted documents on our fifth set of commitments. This included an update on data submitted to DOJ, our Department of Justice, on compliance for our multilingual learners and a memo update on inclusion, as well as the presentation that tonight you will hear on our transformation schools. I also want to comment on a letter that I received from a group of retired educators of color sharing their concerns about educators of color in BPS being targeted in investigations and their concerns about the process used to conduct our investigations in hearings. I have immense respect for the retired educators of color who signed the letter as I worked with many of these educators throughout my years in BPS. And many of them were and are my mentors when I was a principal, an assistant superintendent, and now a superintendent. I want to share that upon receiving the letter, I asked our legal office to retain an independent investigator who could look into the allegations. Our legal office has retained the services of Natasha Tidwell of the law firm Saul Ewing Arnstein and Lear. Ms. Tidwell will conduct a review of the concerns raised in the letter. I also met earlier this week with Dr. Al Holland, who represented the group of educators who signed the letter along with Attorney Mackey and our Chief of Staff to have a further conversation about the letter and the concerns. And I will continue to update School Committee as the investigation proceeds. To close on a really happy note, the Ellis Early Learning Center honored Chairperson Jerry Robinson as their hero of early childhood education for her outstanding leadership and achievements in the early education space. Jerry is an amazing supporter and advocate for young people. I want to thank Chair Robinson for her steadfast leadership and support. She's a true example of what it means to serve. As I conclude my report, I want to share this lovely video that features remarks from Mayor Michelle Wu about Jerry's work. Congratulations, Chair, and that does conclude my report this evening.
Thank you very much. I would, so I want to, I want to thank the superintendent for the report and thank you for the acknowledgement. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee.
And Chair, I just, if I could, I just wanted to say that I abbreviated this week's report because our two presentations are so dense to be able to allow committee members full-time for, for the questions on those reports.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, thank you for the, the update. Just a, a question more or less about the, the the increase in community violence that, that we've seen. I mean, if you could give a little bit more, just shed a little bit more about like what you all are planning in terms of, of outreach and programming that you might be doing. Just, you know, any, just ideas, because I'm very curious about this.
Sure. So we have, we have some things that are short-term that we can launch quickly and then other things that are going to take planning. Increasing capacity in the alternative education space is both short-term and long-term. So we're in that process now. But a good example, the ReEngagement Center has been visiting each of the schools at the high school level, meeting with students and giving them the opportunity, if they're off track, to be able to see what else is possible. Being able, if they have questions about particular alternative education or ed options, explaining what the programs are, how they would access those programs, if they are or their parent are interested in them, helping facilitate the application. So really coming to the students instead of expecting students who are already struggling to do something more themselves. And through that referral process, we have some words of 70 students who have expressed interest in looking at other types of programming. And so that, to me, is a very positive sign because we're getting students while they're still coming to school somewhat regularly. Our chronic absenteeism, we're working with our supervisors of attendance and trying to also coordinate to go out and door knock. So, and, and really go to homes so that we can engage with the parents and the students to figure out what the barrier is for that young person coming to school regularly. Would be done outreach to nonprofits and CBOs in the space of thinking about what kinds of programs they might be able to offer that we could support financially and with space to students who need to reengage. Peer mediation, we're in the process of looking at several models. We are working with the city and their, several of their staff to come in and hold circles of mediation for conflicts that are known. And then we're in the background, beginning to build out a peer mediation program for the conflicts that we know will happen so that students have that opportunity to engage in that space. So when I say multi-pronged, there's literally 10, 12 different types of strategies that we need to sort of all develop to make sure we're reaching youth, either those that have already dropped out to return or those that are thinking to drop out or might have one foot in, one foot out, who need a different, a different setting or a different alternative to get back on track. So I hope that helps. So it's, it's, it's in a lot of different spaces.
No, no, absolutely, no, it absolutely does. I mean, and I think also, I, I think this is good particularly because you're talking about some of the more, the roots of, the systemic roots of, of many of these issues. Obviously, in the last few weeks, we've seen more, more concern and attention being paid to sort of what's happening in the moment and how does communication on behalf of BPS sort of break down or why aren't families notified in, in certain times? And, you know, and I think that conversation needs to happen and that conversation needs to happen in parallel with, let's make sure that we're addressing the, the roots of a lot of these issues, which can be rooted in community violence or if it is something, if there are multiple things that are happening as a result of schools, then we need the programming that actually supports the, the entirety of the student and the family. So that's there. So that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
That's great. Just in terms of the comment about the communication piece. So one of the things that we are trying to message and move toward is the consistency of using email to get the information out. What we discover is schools often have secondary communication systems and parents will often go to them and so schools don't think.
I believe one of the interpreters has moved out of their channel. If you could just move back into your interpretation channel?
There we go. And so that, that definitely in a couple of the situations has happened and it's been important we figure it out so that we can work with that school to make sure they're using mail as the primary, phone calls, and then whatever else they're using, but to do it at the same time, so there isn't a delay. I think on average, our communications department has been sending seven to 10 notices out a day for various, let's say, incidents. They can range from a medical emergency that students witnessed to activity, say, BPD activity in the neighborhood that impacted school to something on campus that could have involved a physical altercation or in the worst-case scenario, a suspicion of a weapon. So commis has been really working hard with the school leaders to get that information out in a timely way to parents and to message to parents the importance of, of knowing that that will come in email. That that is, that is, that is the primary way to check. The difficulty with the phone numbers is that oftentimes phone numbers will change. So keeping up to date on the phone numbers, which parents can do through Aspen, isn't always either known or the parent doesn't have time to do it. And so you end up with a breakdown if the phone is the primary of parents getting it. The email seems to be more stable in terms of parents checking it. So there's a lot of, I think, reculturing that we have to go through in the world of communication so that we have good reliable systems, both on the BPS side and making sure families receive them.
Thank you. Mr. Tran? Okay. Mr. Tran and then Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Hi. You spoke about the letter that you received from a group of administrators and teachers and whatnot regarding disparate treatment that they received. I, I gather that the letter was sent to the school and it remains an internal process at this point? Or I have a couple of questions regarding this. The first question is, is that letter at this stage remain an internal process and internal, an internal administrative process? Or has it been filed with any other administrative agency out there or, or the court? That's the first question. Part of that question is this. You mentioned that you are, you also had retained a law firm to conduct the investigation. Is there a possibility for us, as school committee members, to at least know some of the meat, let's say, or, you know, I hate to use the word allegations, even though it is allegations at this point, but I would rather call it a meat at this point that you're dealing with and that we, we would have been somehow apprised of what they are in addition to the steps that the law firm is, is taking on in dealing with that as well as the timeline when certain kind of probative decision will be made on that on, 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 on the meat of the complaint. And what are our roles as committee members in handling this, in dealing with it?
Sure. So I'll do my, I'll do my best to answer this. So it is, the letter is not a legal letter. It was a letter of concern that actually wasn't from about any one of those educators. It was on behalf of educators of color as a whole. In other words, they, they had heard situations from educators of color who had perhaps been investigated or perhaps who had been terminated and they were bringing forth a concern as a group that they had heard this over and over, that they wanted and felt an investigation should happen to make sure that there was not disparate outcome. So it's not a lawsuit, it's not, it is really a letter of concern from a group of educators who are well-respected within BPS for their service over the years. And so our protocol, when we get such a letter, is Lisa Mackey, our attorney, will often assign an investigator. We felt it was important to have an We felt it was important to uh have an external investigator who happens to be an attorney. For this particular uh situation.
Good.
So were it to um become a lawsuit or to become legal. Then there's a protocol in which Attorney Mackey would apprise school committee of that. But at this point, it is literally just a letter to state their concern in the aggregate as a group.
So it, in that letter, I should just follow up, I'm sorry, but very quickly. In that letter, the allegations set forth just a, 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 a number of, of, uh. Allegations. With, what, were there any kind of uh? Evidence raised in that, aside from the fact that this teacher, that teacher, that this admini- administrator, that administrator was. Wa- was treated differently in terms of termination? No.
No, in fact, there were no specific allegations, no specific people listed in the letter, just that. They felt on what they had heard, that there was concern that there was a targeting. Of educators of color. And uh, in confusion on the process that we use for investigating and hearing. And those, those are really the two things that we have the investigator pursuing. So as part of that, she, you know, she will look through, um, you know, from, I think the. It's, it's basically the last three years is the timeframe. So we'll look over the last three years to see it, you know, if in fact. The data shows a pattern, um, you know, I'm sure as part of interviewing. Um, we'll um ask the questions about how people experienced. The process to see if there's recommendations for us on how to um make the, the process more transparent or understandable. In addition to obviously, if there is disparate outcome in the data, uh, what we intend to do about that. So right now it's at a very high level, but with investigator.
Okay, um, just last comment, given what you have just explained to me, I personally applaud your. You know, you're, you're proactive and judicious uh interaction dealing with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Carden Hernandez.
Yeah, I, I have a follow-up on this too, and I, I wanna echo my fellow member who applaud you just on, I'm trying to move swiftly here. Um, and the, I've seen the letter only because it's, you know, it was emailed to us, but also now it's been in the press. And so, you know, there was one specific thing that I'm, I'm sort of curious about where you stand. And I think this is different than a, a review of the data to see patterns. That may show bias, either explicit or implicit. And so, and the, the part that sort of came up in the letter that I'm curious about is, it's referenced that the um. The hearing officer for um these investigatory meetings. Are this, is the same person who investigates and then also reports on the case. And is it, so I think they were talking about uh sort of bias in. Uh, the in uh initiation of these investigatory meetings, but also a bias in the process. That sort of takes away due process because it's the same person investigating. And then also we're, or sort of presenting and then deciding. And I'm curious, you know, forget the data, just in terms of a, a process that's equitable and fair. What are your thoughts about how it currently exists, structure?
Sure. So we did clear, I appreciate that question. So we did clarify um uh with Attorney Mackey that. Uh, there is never a situation in which the investigator is the hearing officer. There's two parts to the process is the investigation and then there's a hearing. And I think part of it was in communication um of situations that people were communicating back. There, there was a, a lack of clarity that they were actually talking about the investigatory meeting and not the hearing. So we were able by meeting, because as you know, meeting does help to clarify, because you're in, you know, you can talk through. We were able to clarify that piece. That said, it, it, you know, um, one of the things we talked about. That we would make sure the investigator um also found a way to look at. Was people's understanding of the process. Right? Because perception can be equally um a problem as much as the actual reality. So uh people's understanding of their right in investigatory, their right in a hearing is equally important. And so that was the other piece that we, I, I spoke through with Dr. Holland as we talked through this. Um, that we would ask investigator to give us some recommendation on if it seemed that there was a true lack of clarity. Um, in these situations of, of people's understanding or of their, I guess, attorney, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for that. And, and again, thank you for your, for your leadership here and, and, and moving to see. Uh, where the problem lies. Uh, my, my second question is around transportation. You know, over the last week, we obviously as school committee members get questions all the time uh and emails. I uh, sometimes reply to folks and just say like, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I'm not replying, you know, because I'm, we're gonna figure this out and make sure that. The, the team at BPS uh gets them a response. Um, I have always noticed in any of the, the emails that escalate to us around transportation that someone from the team responds. And says, we're gonna get in touch with you uh to deal with this one-on-one. But one uh sort of stood out to me, and I don't want to reference the case too much, but it was a young person. Who uh, the family had identified that the, the student with special needs uh had missed. Ten days of school as a result of, of a school bus not coming. And I'm curious, you know, we keep talk, every week, we're talking about sort of an update on transportation. Um, but also the solutions that families have when their school bus doesn't arrive. Including an expedited process to reimburse for uh expenses incurred. And so I'm curious, we talked about sort of big picture last week, right? Like this possible uh partnership with Lyft. Um, as a way to move this forward, but I'm curious if there are any in the short term. Are there any solutions that we're driving forward while we're still trying to accelerate on time classes?
Sure. So I actually, I see men, I have myself to be able to see these issues as well, right? To be able to see trends. I know that um Lisa Mackey's on, so she can update on the partnership. But in these cases, we're making sure that the reimbursement can be escalated and kind of rapidly done. Um, Lisa, I don't know if you want to just, if you're able to do a quick update on, uh, because we are pushing forward this very quickly. Um, and I think our timeline is by, by Thanksgiving. Um, was the last update I thought I received uh to try to get the lift partnership. Because then that takes the reimbursement piece sort of out of the picture. The other thing I would say is that in the case that a student has missed time. We rapidly are putting the compensatory service along with transportation in place. Doesn't solve the original issue or the fact the student missed the days. Um, but that is the follow-up piece as we continue to move through rapidly. Uh, being able to, to get the uh, the transportation piece nailed down. Lisa, did you have any update?
Um, sure. Uh, good evening, Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Skipper, uh apologies for being in my car. I am uh. On my way back to, to bowling from the um. Uh, procession, the vice president's procession has, has created a little bit of a logjam. Um, so we are moving forward with uh the lift agreement. We are uh, you know, moving um. Getting all of our contracts together. Uh, we met again with Lyft um. Last week, they demoed our, all of our stuff, right? People are looking at everything to hopefully onboard that. Really quickly, with respect to reimbursement, um, I met with the auditing office, uh, the CFO of BPS. And several other financial and auditing folks to see how we could expedite the process and. Through the troubleshooting, I think where we identified um, uh, part of the delay in the process is um the notification of eligibility. For transportation, because once the, once a family member fills out the um reimbursement form, it is a pretty quick process from my understanding. Um, so the form has to be completed, you know, fully, um, otherwise it'll get kicked back. But once the parent does it, or guardian, um, it is about a one to two week reimbursement versus, uh, I, I've been hearing six weeks, but that's. It's, it's not actually a six-week process for the city to, to issue the, the reimbursement. It's, it's. Wherever the delay is falling, it, I think it's in the communication process with uh, with the parent or guardian, and so that much time is, is, is moving forward. And I know that um Lauren has uh issued a memo to, to the special ed department regarding. Uh, notifying parents of their eligibility for reimbursement, so hopefully that kind of bridges some of the delay there.
Thank you. I'm happy to see that this piece of the puzzle um. Is being addressed, but also that we're, we're thinking about solutions and I'm excited to learn more about what. The lift partnership means for families and um, and just another option that they have if they're experiencing delays.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Okay, my turn. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent for the report. Yo estoy escuchando mucho las familias que tienen una preocupación genuina por la violencia y la seguridad. De sus niños dentro de la escuela.
I don't know.
I've been listening a lot from the families about a real concern with violence. And security in the schools for their children.
Y esto sabemos que hay una violencia generalizada y que ahí ha habido. Eh, lamentablemente, situaciones que nos obligan a nosotros a pensar. En técnicas y planes.
We uh know, um, unfortunately, that there's a generalized violence. Going on and that forces us to think about uh strategies and techniques. To address this.
Entonces mi pregunta es, qué planes está pensa, está desarrollando el distrito con los líderes escolares. Para nuestros niños, cómo estamos ayudando a los niños explicando lo que está pasando.
My question is, how is the district planning with school leaders? Uh, to deal with this and how can we explain to our children what's going on?
Uh, so through you, Chair. Um, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Polanco Garcia. Um, so. I think this is a complex uh issue, because there's much going on. That impacts our students outside of school, that then the students come into school with it. Um, simple things such as uh social media fighting, uh altercations on social media. That then the next day, the students want to physically fight. Our students have lost some of the tools of how to talk with each other and how to solve conflict. In a verbal way. And so just as important as reteaching academic skill. Is us reteaching them how to be together in relationship and work through things. Most of the violence we see of students fighting. Or at the start of school, when we had the uh, the Burke and the gun piece. Was um, was conflict over. Um, things like relationships. Um, or uh conflict over somebody called somebody something on social media. These are things we can work through, but we have to give the students a place to work through it. And develop the skills. Stu- stu- for instance, we are working on peer mediation. Developing a program that teaches older students how to help younger students to navigate. That teaches adults how to help older students navigate conflict. The city will be having some of its staff who are trained come in and offer circles. For young people who have known conflict to talk through it together. That's just one example of something that should happen to help reduce the emotion. And, and the violence. The issue of weapons on the street and accessibility is very real. It's real as a city. When I went to um the Council for Great City Schools and I talked to other urban superintendents. Across the board, they said the same thing. There's too many weapons that younger students can access. So this is where we need parents and the community to play a role. If they see something, to say something. If they hear something with a student, they let us know that. So we can work with young people in school. Um, or connect them to city services to help support. So this is, I appreciated the faith-based leader community meeting with us. To give us a place that as a community, we could begin to come together. And have this important dialogue of putting our arms around our students. And as the adults, giving them good models. Of how to be able to work and coexist together in school and out of school. And when there's an issue, coming together to support the student and the family through it. So there's going to be in our plan, many different strategies to get at this. But that's one example of a simple piece of mediation that can help to avoid. Much of the physical contact fighting that we see with students. I will say, the phone. Is a problem. It's a problem because students will, students um are always on social media. And they will often post things on social media that cause argument, cause conflict. Embarrass are not appropriate. They had, they, during the pandemic, I think some of the boundaries of using technology um got lost. And so one thing parents can do is to really look at what their students are doing using technology. Who are their friends? How are they interacting? Do they see healthy things? Do they see not healthy things and talk with their students about that? So our family engagement is going to be doing a lot more with parents around the, the knowledge. Most parents will say, I don't know what my stu- like, I don't know the technology my student uses. So that's an area we can help as a district by giving parents some tips of what to look for, how to look for it. So that they can make sure their students are making healthy choices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mister O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quickly, Superintendent, following along that thought, uh, because this is, is an important topic, right? And I appreciate what the district is trying to do. But could you enlighten me or us as well of how you see the district fitting in more of on a city solution? I know the mayor has talked about a children's cabinet, you know, the proverbial expression, it takes a village. You talked about faith-based, um. You know, uh, how do we involve the community, the, the um, community centers more, the Boys and Girls Club, the Y, et cetera? How do we, how do we help? Because this, I agree completely, and I, and I've heard this from a number of folks about. For our students, it's about the social skills, not having had those two years of development on social skills that just as important. So A, help me out with what your thinking is of how Boston Public Schools fits in the bigger picture. And then separately, you mentioned about phones and I, you know, going out and visiting schools of, I know several of our schools. Do not allow our students to use their phone during the day. They do put them in sealable packages so the students can have them with them, because it is literally, we all freak out if our phone is not within hand reach, right? I mean, I shut mine off during school committee meetings and it's weird not to have it, but. How do you, you know, i- is this something you think other schools maybe doing as well and is, is that part of the piece?
Yeah, so I think, you know, again, I don't think there's one strategy. I think it's going to be a lot, but for the first question. I think, you know, we are an ecosystem in the city and, you know, one of the things we know is. There's during school time and then there's all the time after, right? Which is eighty percent of students waking time. And, you know, and so for us to look with nonprofits, it's community-based organizations like Boston and Beyond does this. what are the ways we can expand with the city, opportunities for healthy engagement for students in the hours after school, in the early evenings, on the weekends, and in the summer? And I think it's going to take that kind of just everybody all in on this, thinking out of the box. Some of these might be ones we can support fiscally, we can also support programmatically or in space. Same with the city, being able to look across the city to some of the organizations you're talking about, the Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA's, the Boxing Clubs, the you know, the the clubhouses and really start to kind of think about how can we have a full press for our kids so that they have lots of healthy choices as a young person? And I think what I've heard the city say, what I've heard the mayor say is that that is something they want to actualize with us. And we would, you know, connecting the students to the resources is the critical piece. So that's going to be a big push for us as one of the strategies as we combat what's going on. In addition to making sure the safest place for our students is our schools. The safest place for our students is our schools. So we need to make sure students are in school when they should be. And so this is where working with parents, working with our attendance folks, you know, working in door knocking, you know, if a young person's having a hard time getting to and from school, if a young person's having a hard time and they're off track and they don't know how to reengage, this is where we need to open that dialogue with our families to figure out what they need so that they can be in the safest place possible, which is in our schools. During school, in the after-school activities, etc. So that is going to be a big piece of work as we work through it, almost like we do in the summer. In the summer, everyone comes together, so we have a big plan, cohesively, for our students. Boston and Beyond is one of the conveners. We know it works. We know the young people that participate go on and in the school year, they have much less transitional issues. They they're, they achieve at higher levels. We need to have that same focus in the in the nine months of school, in the nine and a half months of school. We can't see that time as any less important than what happens in the summer. So that's going to be the, that's going to be the work. In terms of the phones, I think these are best practices. I think part of what we're talking about and trying to get schools to share is what's working for them relative to engagement. What's helping them to keep the kids focused in school, on task, you know, less of the you know, less of the non-kind of academic behavior stuff, you know, what are those strategies? What are those really good engagement strategies? And for some of them, the technology and the phones is one of the strategies. There are other schools that they don't collect the phones and they're still able to keep the kids really focused and engaged. So I think it, we're working right now to kind of share that best practice and the regional network model is a great way to do it. Because that's how we're able to surface in our networks, the, you know, what schools are having the most positive outcomes for their young people and then be able to share that across the network structure.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I see Chief Coakley has her camera on. Did you want to say something?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I have a technical difficulty.
Yes, just, I think the superintendent really hit it on the key. You know, social media is really killing us. It was killing us over the pandemic. We did a couple of posts just really, what we're also seeing is that parents believe that their young people are not as active on social media as they actually are. And so sometimes during some investigations, we found out one parent would come in and say, no, my daughter doesn't have any social media. She doesn't have a TikTok. She doesn't have a Twitter. And I have to enlighten them and say, yes, of course she does. And this is the kind of, you know, communication she's had on this. So that that is a challenge for us as well. And as the superintendent said, I think we've we've engaged in the last couple of weeks, Superintendent, maybe four or five large, you know, community meetings. I think that's the way to go, you know what I mean? Really to create a seamless atmosphere between community partners, schools. It's just not schools we did that. We we partner with everyone. We did a girls' program. I think I presented on it last year, a partnership between Girls Leaps and Big Sisters, in which they dealt with social, emotional learning and mentoring with and self-defense, physical, social, emotional self-defense between the two partnerships. Never went done before, but we've, now we've sought sought out grant funding to extend that program to an eight-week program within two schools. Base program, the base program, Robert Lewis is over at the Boys and Girls Club. I just got an email from them saying that want to see about, you know, partnering with them for Boston Public Schools, the clubhouse. I think the base just hired a new executive secretary, an executive CEO, so we're looking at partnering with them. So I think the way is really to create a wraparound service of community partners. We sat down with BPD. I think that's a very important piece. You know, to make sure that we have a seamless partnership and a cohesive partnership with our law enforcement agencies. And and just really to engage our young people. I think the superintendent's, you know, notion of really getting the youth and peer mentorship, I think that's outstanding. And I think we need to really engage our BSAC members and see about really getting that on board. So we've all thought out of the box, this is a national issue, unfortunately. We had a perfect storm of, you know, the pandemic, you know, and and just a whole bunch of other things. But now our kids are re-socializing and just some challenges with it. But I have hope for them. I have hope that, you know, we will come back to what we were before the pandemic. We, you know, we were doing some wonderful things in the community and we're looking forward to continue to do those.
Thank you. I just wanted to check in with our student, Mr. Men. Did you have comment or question?
I wasn't going to say anything, but what I am, but I guess I'll say something. I do agree that there are problems with social media concerning safety. And I just also like to say, like, there's not a lot that as a district we can do. Because this is obviously a person-by-person problem. And then there's also the fact of the matter that people are going to talk to each other. And on the, and I'd also like to say, on the other hand, as much as problems as social media does have, it's not all bad.
That's true.
Like, it's sometimes like you can see like your friend having a good time or at a party or like something like that. And like, sometimes that's just kind of like, kind of fun. And so I'm just gonna say like, there's I think the better thing to address the social media problem is more of addressing the root problem. Uh, making sure that there's a better school environment. That way, people aren't doing this to and like, yeah.
Thank you. Superintendent, did you want to respond?
No, I I just, I I was smiling because I, you know, as always, Diego is spot on. You know, there is, there is much good with social media. And for many students, actually, social media is a really healthy outlet. It's, the difficulty is when there's conflict on social media, it becomes very hard to de-escalate it. Unless you know of, unless we know about it and we can offer the students an opportunity to come together. So oftentimes, that's what we sort of see at the root of the conflicts, is it started someplace out on social media at some point and then it kind of spills into the school. But I I do know that just like technology, there's so many appropriate and good uses for it, and it does some things like tonight. It's connecting all of us in a way that, you know, isn't physical in letting people that couldn't necessarily come be able to sit in and listen and hear what's happening. But it had, you know, it it has to, we we always have to be cautious about intended consequence. So I think that's the part that we're trying to work hard with parents and students on, is that balance, right? It's finding that balance, Diego. So thank you very much.
Yeah. So Superintendent, I have two quick questions. I know we didn't discuss COVID or any kind of health update, but with the growing concerns around RSV, flu, and COVID, what are your thoughts? Where is the district moving towards thinking about masking or any other options? The children's hospital is overflowing with cases, so it's becoming of a different concern.
Yeah, no. So thank you for the the question, Chair. And I will actually ask Ms. Costello, because she is our resident data person when it comes to our, the health data. We we literally every day are going through the numbers. We meet with Boston Health. We've, we've seen both in the wastewater, it going down. We've seen in our schools, a real level off. We really haven't seen too much uptick. We have seen more to your point of things like the flu, you know, or RSV. However, this is something we're looking at constantly, particularly going into the holidays. And, you know, we're, we just, we feel like, you know, we need to be nimble to be able to make decisions as the data comes in. But right now, I think just in the review of the data, you know, we feel that the mitigations we have in place are the mitigations we should have. We always strongly encourage masking and we will continue to do that right now. But we have not made any further determination of a need to to formally mask. And Megan, I don't know if you want to just give.
No, I I think you covered it, you know, something we're continuing to monitor closely. As the superintendent said, we have seen the wastewater go down and really more focused on, you know, cleaning protocols and other things like that as a result of RSV and flu and neurovirus and some of those other infectious diseases that before COVID, you know, people were used to responding to. So continuing to follow the protocols, encouraging everybody to mask and test. Testing is really key. We do provide students and staff with a weekly test that regardless of symptoms, they should take.
Yeah. It's interesting. When I go into the schools and I look at the teacher rooms and I look at the teacher mailboxes, you know, we're in, you know, the the COVID era because in each of the boxes are the tests to take home. Right? In addition to their important announcements. So schools are definitely following, you know, the protocols, people are using the tests. You know, as we want them to. And in areas like long weekends and things like that, we're supplying additional tests because we think it's that important that that people are are using them actively.
Thank you. Yeah. And the other quick question was about, I know when we talk about chronic absenteeism, we're often talking about at the high school level, what are we doing about, what is the absentee rates at the lower levels, particularly kindergarten? Things that are not required but are important, as well as the elementary grades?
Yeah, so I'm glad you raised this. So I'm actually Chief Kelton. I'm going to ask her to come on just because we're actively working on the attendance components. So just a a kind of a few thoughts on this. You're going to see tonight in even a couple of the cues of that is very targeted goals around absenteeism and chronic absentee and and using data to make sure at all levels that we're aware of what students are out, what students are out at a chronic level, and then making sure that there's an attendance plan in place for students. That all happens through the student support mechanism and the student support teams. So we've done a real push on this this year. You know, Jillian coming into the chief role has direct background in this. Her work, you know, particularly in the last couple of years around school safety has been this linkage to when students are out, you know, often unhealthy choices get made. So we're very, we're fully aware of it. And while it is true that at the high school level, you tend to see the higher amounts, and that's for a lot of reasons, age sixteen and plus. Whereas if there are, if a student's under sixteen, the steps we can take that are a little bit more impactful to to have the students come in. But even at the elementary school level, you see chronic absenteeism. So we can get you the detailed rates. I don't, I didn't pull a report yet this week. I normally pull them on Fridays. But Jillian, I I don't know if you want to just speak to what we're doing for process?
Yeah, I think, well, one of the things that we're stressing, especially at the lower grade levels, especially in kindergarten, that's really the gateway, right? That's where we set the example. That's where we start our relationships with so many students and so many families. And I think that's something, you know, through our office of attendance, through our supervisors of attendance and through our office of social work, that we're, we're really trying to wrap around promoting that relationship with families. When we see families that are struggling with attendance, meeting them where they are and also conducting home visits with our supervisors of attendance and also providing that link within the community, making sure that families have the resources that they need. And also really educating families around the importance of school attendance, even in kindergarten. Equating for them, you know, how many hours a week is missed of instruction and what that equals out to. You know, in a month of how much school that their child has missed. So it's, you know, for me, it's really, you know, I'm trying to, you know, and in the entire student support division, we're really trying to cultivate both education for families around the importance of attendance, but also creating wraparound services and a support model. So like Superintendent Skipper said, student support team meetings are essential, especially in the lower grades where we talk through student concerns and we involve families in those conversations and come up with proactive action plans where we do, where we are doing tiered interventions, especially around attendance and sharing those out with families and asking them to also bring in any community partners that they feel would be would help in their success of getting their student to school every day.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Chief. So Chair, the last report I have, which is ten twenty-six, again, I pulled it out for this week, but just to give you a sense, percentage-wise, first grade was twenty-six percent for chronic absenteeism. And again, this isn't broken down with minusing COVID or minusing excused illness. So this is just sheer absence, right? Like, we can break it down further, but to give you a sense, so this would be the high watermark. First grade was twenty-six percent, second grade twenty-two, third grade twenty, fourth grade twenty, fifth grade twenty-one, sixth grade twenty-one, seventh grade twenty-three, eighth grade twenty-eight. So that'll give you a sense, right? And again, if we were to extract from that, which we do, if we were to extract from that, excused absences, you know, we're obviously much lower than that, but that gives you kind of that benchmark. And that's roughly about where we normally would run is somewhere around that twenty-two to twenty-six, somewhere around there. So we're kind of in that that ball. High school, different story. And what's mixed into that data at the high school level, which are higher, are also the students who, though, in effect, are dropping out. And that's why we're trying desperately to go after the students with the highest chronic absenteeism to try to see if we can get them into a a program or a different type of setting to get them restarted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cuddey Hernandez, your hand is raised. Is that from before or is that another question?
One more question that I didn't get to in my last round.
Okay, you can ask it and we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious, you know, so many of, as we're thinking about the the increase in community violence and the increase in chronic absenteeism, so many of the solutions we're talking about are great and we know they work because they helped to narrow gaps before. But I'm thinking about this opportunity with Esser Funds to innovate, think differently about how to move the needle here and also a full recognition that like our kids are different after COVID. And so the strategies to to narrow these gaps and build a sense of belonging for kids in our schools has to look different. And I'm just curious with Esser Funds, are there any innovations there that we're thinking about? Particularly as the problem expands, you know, I'm a huge proponent of putting money into young people's pockets, work studies, attendance incentives. But just like things we've never, that have always been on the table before COVID that we never got to do, that we can do now. And I'm just sort of curious where where are you, where we're at?
Yeah, so I appreciate that question through, Chair. So I I think this is part of the strategies we're formulating. I think on the incentive side with the absenteeism, that could well be something that we move toward. I think on the job side, that's someplace we want to immediately kind of get to. You know, what we heard from young people is there's a lot of jobs, they don't always know how to connect to them. And so that's probably, that's a problem. We see that in the summer. I think Diego brought this up, like, like, I think half of the summer jobs are unfilled, right, initially? So that tells us disconnection, like, there needs to be one process, student gets in it, can can like, actually like, like, apply, get interviewed, get the job, right, done. We remove the barriers. So we we want to work closely in workforce, particularly for our older students as we bring them back to immediately get them into a paying job, right? Like, that's part of it. And can Esser help with job training for some of the courses? We might be able to be really creative about how to have them half-day kind of about how to have them half-day kind of do their work and half-day actually do academic work as a way to get back on track. Yeah, we've done that before, at least what I have at the high school level in the summer, and it works beautifully. Um, because it's incentive, so why not to enter in the school year? So I think these are the kinds of things we really wanna kind of blow up a little bit and think really out of the box about how to get uh, this, particularly this seventeen to twenty-two-year-old population back, who are in a situation where they have to work for the most part.
Yeah. I'm excited to hear more about this. I, you know, I meant what I said. I just think there's like been such great ideas on the table before COVID, and we finally our resource to do it. And so I just wanna, you know, I wanna see us trying these things out, whether that's investing in other organizations to do the work, uh, whether it's, you know, getting the money in their pockets, or to your point, you know, doing the work to connect young people to jobs, um, so that they feel like we're, we're working for them. Um, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lo Para? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but maybe the subject, excuse me, but may be referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have nine speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you use to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. I will now invite our Cantonese interpreter to offer support for our first speaker. Peggy Chen.
Yeah, excuse me, Ms. Yeah, excuse me, Sullivan, before we begin, I just want to reiterate that to the public that we do follow Robin's rules of order, particularly with public comment. And in our last meeting, there were several occurrences when people were addressing others than myself. Please remember to only address me, the chair, during this meeting. Thank you. Please move on.
Thank you. Ms. Chan?
Chan,女士，系咪到？ 陈女士，系咪到？ 你可以举手啊你要接受我的先可以俾你发言噶
Ms. Chen, will you please accept the prompt?
但系会学到依家都系咁啦。
Okay.
但佢佢。
你是住唐街噶系嘛？
系啊，系我住唐门街噶。
Okay. Um, my name is Peggy Chen. I live in Chinatown. Uh, my my son, it's a special needs kids uh, that goes to uh, Josiah Quincy Elementary School. Uh, since the school begins every morning, uh, I experience delay for my kids' transportation. 该做啊。
啊，啊，啦，但佢 佢又入得行翻学啊，今日唔翻学啊。佢唔翻啊，因为佢话刚啊，一日迟到。一日日啊，带佢呢有车河。差唔多六点钟先翻嚟。
嗯。
Okay.
佢边咧咧？ 讲啊。
你等我翻译咗先吓，好唔好啊？Okay, 没意思。Um, so, um, because my my son is experiencing delay for transportation every single day. Now, uh, my son does not wanna go to school anymore. Um, he feel very frustrated and he will cover, uh, he wouldn't get out of the bed, he would cover himself with the cu, um, with a blanket. Uh, and then, uh, even the evening, um, now the the bus number has changed from two four nine to two four seven. Uh, sometimes she'll return home around six P M. 该做啊。Yeah, I'm very concerned about my son because the delay of the transportation is significantly impacting his emotional health. Um, he cannot um, catch up academically. Uh, he's lagging in school. Uh, some of the transportation are sixty minutes behind. Um, he's in the LD class. Um, I'm expecting even the general class students um, may experience similar problem if that's happening to them as well. They couldn't catch up with other kids. 该做啊。
翻嚟一陣间就依家佢。
Okay. Okay.系咪讲完啊，陈陈女士？ Okay. Um, because of this reason, um, I would like the school, um, commit, um, the public school to address this concern. Um, you know, because of the reason my son is not going to school every day. Uh, he's feeling frustrated because there's significant delayed of the bus. Um, so, um, this morning particularly, I have to calm my son down and talk to uh, him, uh, trying to sweet talk him and tell him, oh, I will talk to the principal. Um, so that's how, you know, to kind of encourage him to go to the class. Um, and, um, this bus, two seven, uh, two four seven bus just arrived, um, you know, around six P M today. Um, and sometimes when I check the bus on the app, the bus was in the Chowstown. I I completely lost track of the bus. So, um, I would like this, um, the public school to consider um, having a smaller size bus, so my son doesn't have to go around the city and return back to the community um, every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Our next speaker is John Mudd, followed by Maureen Moore, Nancy Lessin, Elise Pector, and Cheryl Buckman. If you could please raise your hands virtually. John Mudd?
Did I make it, Elizabeth?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime advocate on education issues in Boston. I wanted to night, tonight, to speak a bit about teacher diversity. Uh, Madam Chair, many of us deeply appreciate the superintendent's reassurance in the Globe this week that she is committed to hiring a workforce of educators who reflect the racial, cultural, and linguistic diversity of BPS students. It would now be important to ensure that this commitment is incorporated in future statements of BPS and school committee priorities. And future diversity reports should use this comparison in addition to the Garrity standards of twenty-five percent black and ten percent other uh, faculty, which are woefully out of date in a system that is thirty-two percent black, forty-three percent Latino, and ten, nine percent Asian. Unfortunately, the numbers in the current uh, uh, update report show only marginal improvement in the percentages. Blacks at twenty-three percent are still below the Garrity standard and are far below the thirty-two percent black enrollment. Latinos at twelve percent are dramatically below the forty-three percent enrollment. It's also important to look at the absolute numbers as well as percentages. For example, the report shows an increase of only seventy black teachers over four years, or about fifteen or so per year. That is clearly not enough. We can and should do better. For the bilingual educators, the accelerated community to teacher program, the enrollment is only six bilingual candidates this year, and the goal is to increase the program from six to sixteen next year. That is totally inadequate given the need. BPS needs to give priority in general to recruiting, hiring, and developing bilingual teachers. The Equity Impact Statement accompanying the annual hiring report says that the presentation is not associated with a request for additional funds. Why not? Isn't this exactly the kind of innovative investment that should be supported by Esser Funding? This lack of a budget request points to a deeper issue about these kinds of reports. I've repeatedly suggested that the report should be about a third on data, a third on lessons that can be drawn from the data, and a third on recommendations. I had thought that this suggestion had gotten some positive response from a committee members. But this report uh, as usual, includes no recommendations for any substantial new strategies to promote teacher diversity.
Twenty seconds.
When these kinds of reports come to you, isn't this the time when such recommendations should be made and discussed with the committee? Why doesn't the committee ask for them when reports come to it? But thank you for hearing me. Good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maureen Moore.
Hi, I thought I was already. I'm sorry about that. My name is Maureen Moore. I am an employee of the Boston Schools, and I live in West Roxbury right now. Um, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Administrative Guild Unit. Um, although we don't receive the same media coverage, entitlements, or attention, we are very much, these are the Boston Public Schools. We fall into two categories, central-based and school-based workers. Each BPS building has a guild member somewhere supporting um, the day-to-day operations of the schools and the buildings. The following that I'm gonna read doesn't scratch the surface of what we do every day. Our central-based members are the people fixing your computers, processing purchases to support our schools and offices, processing payroll, answering your calls, processing work orders, supporting resignations and retirement, supporting all contractual changes and leaves of absence, and the transportation offices. Many of our central-based staff were the first to return during COVID, but before the managers, before the teachers, and before administrators, and we have been there in person since. We are there each day while managerial staff are able to work a hybrid schedule, which we have been denied access to. Our school-based members are sped clerks. The special education clerks, they are the ones making sure your children's I E Ps are scheduled, signed, delivered, and secured, assuring that the educational needs of the children are met. These clerks are asked to cover between three to five difference per week. In this school year, we're only given their assignments a week before the school started instead of in the preceding May, leaving them scrambling to make travel and childcare arrangements at the absolute last minute. Many of these changes impacted their work hours based upon the new assignments. We are making seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents an hour. Our school secretaries are the first face your children see in the morning and the last face in the afternoon. We mind your children if they need some space when their bus is late. We keep track of their buses. We keep track of who's picking up. We are the people guarding the door of the school. While we're doing all of the above, we're also answering the phones, processing the payroll, taking attendance, lending an ear, ordering supplies, making sure all the classrooms are covered, and supporting our school leaders. We are the first line of defense in our schools, and we sit in harm's way every day. We are making twenty dollars and forty-eight cents an hour. We have a residency requirement upon hire. Other work groups do not. According to Boston.com, Boston's resident rental market has now outpaced San Francisco as the second most expensive city for renters. Most of our members are single-income households, many of them single-parent households, and we are visiting food banks.
Twenty seconds.
These are full-time city of Boston workers, and their wages are shameful. Our contract expired nine one twenty twenty, and we've been struggling to obtain a living wage since. We deserve the protections and compensation that are not equitable, and we ask this out of need, not out of greed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Lessin.
I'm Nancy Lessin, Jamaica Plain, grandmother of four BPS elementary school students, mother of a BPS educator, member of BPS families for COVID safety, also known as FAMCOSA, and Mascot Health Technical Committee. In the first seven weeks of school, BPS COVID cases are over five hundred percent higher than they were in the first seven weeks last year. Since last spring, FAMCOSA has requested a comprehensive effective COVID safety plan for the current school year that centers racial equity and prevents or rapidly contains COVID-nineteen transmission. We don't believe such a plan exists yet. We continue to have many unanswered questions and hope that school committee can get and share answers. A few of our questions. We heard the Boston Public Health Commission recently made COVID safety recommendations to BPS. We'd like to know what they were and which ones have We'd like to know what they were and which ones have been accepted. The BPS website states masking in schools is recommended. Our experience is the vast majority are not masking. Last week, when COVID and wastewater was rising, BPS's letter to families strongly encouraged indoor masking. We're thrilled that COVID and wastewater is currently decreasing, but know it can rise again. What is BPS doing to assess the intervention of going from recommending to strongly encouraging masking? If this intervention doesn't make a difference, what will BPS do the next time COVID and wastewater rises in a sustained, significant way? The BPS website states that masks are required for classroom clusters and defines cluster as three or more cases. BPS states that it will communicate clusters to families only when three or more cases are diagnosed from in-school symptomatic testing. Does this mean that classroom masking would not be required if there are multiple cases, but some are called in by parents? Also, is there an alternative metric for determining classroom cluster in upper grades where students are in many different classrooms? The BPS website states that masks are required for school outbreaks. What is BPS's definition of school outbreak, and what actions will be taken? Will masking be required after school breaks such as Thanksgiving and December holiday, where increased exposures may happen? What is BPS doing to gather more accurate data about COVID cases and spread in schools? The current testing program is insufficient. Not all students are testing weekly, and symptomatic rapid tests can give false negative results. From our conversations with mayoral advisors, we understand that funding is not a barrier to reintroducing pooled PCR testing. Parental consent is also not a barrier as BPS has already gathered permission for symptomatic testing. Will BPS reintroduce weekly pooled PCR testing, at least in school outbreaks and community-wide surges? And how is BPS guaranteeing that COVID policies and plan advance racial equity?
Lessin.
Questions we'd like.
You passed your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elise Pector.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Elise Pector. I live in Jamaica Plain. I'm a grandmother of a BPS student, a member of BPS families for COVID safety and Mascosh. I also want to talk about COVID safety and infrastructure. You know, BPS recently wrote about school facility needs in the Green New Deal for BPS. Quote, "We must face some hard truths about the state of our facilities, from leaky ceilings to windows in need of retrofitting. Most of our buildings are not meeting students' most basic needs." End quote. Even this description misses one of the most important advances of modern buildings, ventilation. The COVID pandemic highlighted school building inadequacies. Three-quarters of our schools lack ventilation systems. It took months to fix enough windows to ensure that one window would open in every classroom. And despite the current mild conditions, cold weather will lead to the same challenges we previously faced. It will be necessary to choose between freezing temperatures and adequate fresh air for COVID safety and the distractions of cold temperatures. Open windows and doors are necessary in most BPS buildings to compensate for apps and systems that are designed to provide outside air as required for all modern buildings, according to Ashray and School Building and Mechanical Codes. For COVID and all other aerosol-transmitted respiratory diseases, flu, RSV, measles, we are putting students and educators at risk. Respiratory diseases are even now filling pediatric hospital beds. Ventilation that provide outside air and filtration is the most important institutional prevention step for COVID and other respiratory diseases. Outside air is needed for learning as well as health. You know, we worried early in the pandemic that we were building the plane while we were flying it. As Chair Robinson stated, we are already anticipating surges of COVID flu and RSV. We now have a chance to plan better. If we don't plan, we won't be prepared for pooled testing when needed, identification of clusters and outbreaks, and the appropriate responses, attention to racial equity and targeting the right schools, expectations for masking, and plans to accommodate weather and ventilation needs. Without planning and attention to immediate and long-term infrastructure, we risk failing, as did the MBTA. I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman, followed by Lauren Peter, Michael Heishman, and Sharon Hinton. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Cheryl.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent to a fourth-grade student at the Dever. I live in South Boston, and I'm a member of FAMCOSA. Both myself and my son suffer from asthma and a rare genetic blood disorder that makes it hard for us both to fight off illness. I'm here tonight due to the concern over COVID in our BPS community, as well as the other viruses that linger around. We need the masking mandate in place to bring this surge of any virus to a halt. Many of our BPS communities live in multi-generational homes or with someone who is immune compromise. Once the masking mandate was prematurely dropped just before school had let out for the summer, my son, just a few short days later, tested positive for the first time. He became very sick and close to needing hospitalization. Then his dad tested positive with only mild symptoms. And finally, I tested positive, sending my long-awaited two-year postponement of spine surgery to be once again postponed. This pandemic is far from over. Winter is fast approaching. What can BPS do to ensure that each member in the community is safe? We can start by bringing back the masking mandate for ten days to start. Then we can ensure after school breaks to ensure a huge surge is prevented. We can bring back PCR testing. What we know is most of these variants are the most transmissible and best at escaping immunity from vaccination and boosters. We are now several weeks into the school with no protective measures in place. What can BPS do to ensure safety for all community as a whole? Well, it's simple. Bring back the mandate during a surge and after long vacation breaks for a short period of time. Also, reintroducing weekly PCR testing at school, notifying the school community in a timely manner of an outbreak or a positive case at their child's school. Then masking, making sure that proper support is in place when an outbreak happens. These are steps BPS must take to into account to ensure that safety of each student, staff, and teacher is safe. I lastly leave with a quote from my ten-year-old special needs boy. Masking up in school keeps our friends, family, teachers, and staff safe from illness. I don't want to go back to a time where I was away from my teachers and friends at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Peter.
Hi. My name is Lauren Peter. I'm a mom to a Sumner third grader and a Roselandale resident. As many fellow parents said last week, thank you for not voting tonight on the mergers, for hearing us when we said that the process was rushed and community engagement was inadequate. This week, we are using the translations that BPS provided to us to create flyers and four languages and to get them into our students' backpacks um, for the Roselandale-wide meeting that was, um, proposed for November seventeenth. At that meeting, we hope to have many voices, um, from our community start the conversation about what elementary school restructuring looks like in our neighborhood. I hope with my whole heart that the merger that's still on the table between the Sumner and the Filbert can be approached in a thoughtful and data-driven way, that this can be examined, um, with equity analysis, and we can be sure that this is the right step forward for our schools um, and our students. Um, I want to be clear that while a merger may seem like a financial win, there are families, staff, and children that have to absorb a lot of change. So we want to make certain that a community-wide plan is in place before any initial steps are taken. Please make certain that we're not in the same position in the spring that we were in October, and that meetings are held between our community and the Filbert community as soon as possible. I love the Sumner, and I feel blessed by the teachers that we have come into contact with over the past four and a half years to my daughter's education. I would really love to be focusing my energy and my advocacy on things that are happening inside the building um, and things that our teachers need and our students need. I loved running into my daughter's classroom at the public library this week and seeing all of the wonderful things that they're learning. I want to be able to volunteer at the book fair and have energy to volunteer at the Fall Fest. I would love to just sit and listen to the transcript or read the transcript of these meetings. Um, not that I don't completely appreciate everything that you're doing on other matters and find them extremely important. Um, I really, really hope that we can have a citywide plan for all of the movements and renovations that need to happen at all of our schools, not just in Roselandale. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you bring to all of your discussions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heishman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja. Honesty, transparency, trust. On August twenty-fourth, fifteen high-ranking retired BPS educators of color had sent a letter to Ms. Skipper protesting against the targeting harassment and elimination of anti-racist Black and Brown central office leaders. This letter is important. Why is it that Acting Superintendent Eccleston and then Superintendent Skipper
Mr. Heishman, Mr. Heishman, did you hear my remarks earlier in the meeting? Please only do not name any members of the the district. Please only address your comments to me.
Okay. I do want to respect Robert's rules. Why did it take three members of the public, including myself, at your ten-twenty-six meeting to blow the whistle, inform the public, and expose this cover-up? Why did it take so long for a name, person I cannot name to bring this up today? Was it because this person had been outed? School Committee Chair. School Committee Chair, thank you for me being able to mention you and school committee members who I will not name. When did you first hear about this scandal? And what did you do about it? Who in central office informed you? Or did you first find out about the letter by the whistleblowers at your last meeting? Well, it seems to me that it was the latter, that you did not know about this, and you only know about this because of the whistleblowers. All of you unnamed should be outraged. On October thirtieth, uh, I can't name the person, but it was mentioned earlier. I don't mean in a derogatory way. Our school leader was quoted in the Boston Globe, sorry, can't say her name, which said that, quote, uh, this person I cannot name, said she is committed to hiring a workforce of educators who reflect the racial, cultural, and linguistic diversity of its forty-nine thousand students. Although the staffing data indicates the diversity of new teachers and guidance counselors hired externally for this year has decreased from the previous year. I believe that this racist coup d'etat, the removal of anti-racist Black and Brown central office leaders, is an important reason why its first workforce has not been hired. Additional consequences will also result from our white supremacist leaders. Racism by our white leaders in central office has raised its ugly head. I'm almost done. The school committee must take strong decisive action. I recommend, I can't name them, I I mentioned them at the last meeting, be selective to the acting superintendent. Uh, I, Robert's rules, uh, Madam Chair, uh, this is ridiculous that I can't name people. Uh, it's ridiculous. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, Executive Director of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated, educator, community activist, Hyde Park homeowner, parent of a BPS graduate, and former BPS student. As I speak yet another time before the Boston School Committee and watch people speak with their eyes and possibly saying, oh, my God, what's she going to say, complain about now? Let me just say that I feel like a broken record sometime, too. I've been doing this long enough to remember when other parents, teachers, and students begged and pleaded for their wonderful schools and programs and teachers and school memories, their tears and begging and broken dreams and promises, and the comments about doing better with different administrations, and yet, here we are again. I've heard so many personal stories of goodness about Superintendent Skipper from family members, colleagues, and friends, and so far, meetings I've been in with Superintendent Skipper, Skipper, excuse me, have been wonderful and positive, and I'm very hopeful and wishing for her success, truly. Well, it's still the honeymoon, and yet, I believe Superintendent Skipper is married to a mess. The superintendent is in a wedding contract with a mate whose background is now sketchy, and the in-laws are crazy and in need of therapy. The village wants to provide support and bring to the table all of what is needed, but at a lot of family gatherings, there may be that drunken uncle who is funny and everyone loves, but who needs to go home. We need truth with our turkey, trust with our gravy, accountability with our green beans, and action in the cooking so that we can seek to bring the BPS family together to have a decent Thanksgiving feast that will keep students safe, families satisfied, and happy in choosing BPS while feeding the mayor, school committee, and the staff. Please send the crazy uncles home by getting rid of those that are getting paid but causing harm to the BPS family, no matter how much you love them. Give them a plate, but send them away as soon as possible so we can finally celebrate our BPS gathering by bringing all of us to the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thanks to the, to all of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first report this meeting is an update on transformation schools. I will now turn it over to Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Linda Chen, for introductory remarks.
Good evening, Chair Robinson and School Committee Members. Tonight, we are pleased to share with you the first of more updates throughout the year on our transformation schools. There's quite a bit of work prioritizing these schools, and Mike Saban, our Executive Director of Transformation Schools, will be providing information on what transformation schools are. And while there's much happening, we will focus tonight on quality school plans, which we have referenced in previous school committee meetings. These plans are important because they delineate strategies schools across the system will focus on to ensure continuous improvement. These are firstly, instruction through equitable literacy, attendance, which the superintendent referenced earlier in her opening comments, and climate and culture. These plans are also important because they create a blueprint for which central office is also accountable to schools to support them through our regional model. So before I turn it over to Mike, I also want to share that we are so pleased that two of our school leaders, um, are taking some time this evening to join us uh, to share what this means. to share what this means from the day-to-day view of a school leader of a transformation school. And they will be introduced as well, but Michelle Simon and Robin Lee are joining us this evening as well. So I want to turn the time over now to Mike Saban.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Saban. I am the Director of the Office of District and School Transformation. And also a new BPS Central Office employee. Having spent the last 19 years as a principal in Somerville, Waltham, and most importantly, Boston. Next slide, please. This presentation is the first quarterly presentation about our work to accelerate improvement at BPS transformation schools. This evening, I will present along with two fantastic school leaders, Michelle Simon from the Henry Gru School and Robin Lee from the Community Academy of Science and Health. On behalf of our schools, Superintendent Skipper, Dr. Chen and Dr. Eccleston, the three of us are excited to have the opportunity to share this work with you. Next slide, please. In tonight's presentation, I will first define some terms and provide an overview of our transformation schools. I will then discuss the development and early implementation of our school improvement plans. At the end of the presentation, our two school leaders will illustrate their plans to bring this work to life. So what are transformation schools? Transformation is a term we in Boston have given to BPS schools identified by DESI as requiring assistance or intervention. Next slide, please. This table in front of you shows the current state approach to categorizing schools. The categories for our transformation schools are highlighted in orange. Schools requiring assistance or intervention. DESI no longer labels Massachusetts schools with numbers, but with the more affirming language of schools receiving focused targeted support or broad comprehensive support. Next slide, thanks. Six BPS schools, formerly turnaround schools, are in the category of underperforming. And are categorized as needing broad comprehensive support. Twenty-two schools are in focused targeted support due to an accountability rating at or below the 10th percentile in 2019. Our transformation schools, 28 schools total, include nine high schools and 19 elementary K-8 or middle schools. There are transformation schools in all nine of our BPS regions. And a complete list of the schools is in the appendix of this slide presentation. Next slide. BPS support for turnaround and transformation schools has a complicated history. Mostly because of shifting federal and state policy. Most importantly for our work this year, the number of schools with DESI involvement expanded in 2019. And the district has supported approximately 30 transformation schools each year for the past three years. Next slide. The charts in front of you summarize some elements of the student body at our 28 transformation schools. It will not be a surprise that the student population in our transformation schools demonstrates a higher level of need than in non-transformation schools. Transformation schools house and educate a significantly higher percentage of low-income students, students with disabilities and English learners than our non-transformation schools. It's also notable that transformation schools have a higher percentage of African American and Latinx students than our non-transformation schools. Next slide. An overview of state performance data shows some concerning patterns of low achievement in our transformation schools. Though certain schools are demonstrating very promising growth. As a group, transformation schools show lower overall performance on the ELA and Math MCAS, lower growth on ELA and Math MCAS, and higher rates of chronic absenteeism than non-transformation schools. While we have been working to support these schools for several years, many transformation schools are not yet showing the accelerated progress that we hope and plan and urgently need to achieve. Next slide. I will now move from describing these schools into an overview of the strategy that BPS is using to accelerate school improvement. As you know, every BPS school is expected to put together an improvement plan each year, which we call a quality school plan. These plans should not be collecting dust. They are our roadmap to meeting the needs of our students and should guide our work every day. For a few minutes, I want to focus on these plans. The foundation and the focal point of our school improvement efforts. Next slide. Excuse me. For BPS transformation schools, this quality school plan is a critically important document. The plans use a common template and take into account school-level data from the past school years as well as the BPS district priorities that Dr. Chen mentioned. Quality school plans at our 28 transformation schools were drafted by a team, by teams of school staff in collaboration with regional liaisons, staff members of our nine regions. They were then carefully reviewed by school superintendents and the transformation office. And the plans were revised as needed prior to submission to DESI at the start of October. These school plans will be updated in the middle of the year, a second 90-day plan that will keep progress moving forward. These plans are the single key document spelling out the improvement goals and strategies at each of our transformation schools and at all BPS schools. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the targets or metrics that are contained in every quality school plan. Academic goals are set using the district-wide map assessment, map meaning measure of academic progress. Schools also have targets in the area of school climate and culture, largely based on the results of student family and faculty surveys. The attendance metric used in the plans is chronic absenteeism. The percentage of students with attendance below 90%. And there are also some high school-specific targets in the plans related to graduation rates and the percentage of students meeting mass core requirements. Next slide, please. The structure of the plan is based on a backwards design approach. In three priority areas, equitable literacy, climate and culture, and attendance, schools identify desired outcomes. And then spell out the steps and the monitoring process they will use to arrive at each outcome. Those of us on the regional teams and in the central office are using these plans to identify ways we can support schools. Again, the quality school plans are serving to focus and align the efforts of school and district staff around common goals and actions. Next slide, please. The collaborative process leading to these improvement plans is a good case study to illustrate the broader BPS approach to supporting our transformation schools. All schools in the district were asked to develop a quality school plan. In our 28 transformation schools, we provided an intensified level of support for plan development prior to submission to the state, to DESI. Transformation schools were given a higher level of support from the district than other schools. And were also held to a higher level of accountability. Both the support and the accountability are appropriate actions to accelerate improvement. Now we are working on plan implementation, making sure our proposed actions reach students in the classroom where it really matters. As with the plan development, higher levels of support and accountability will be provided for implementation. The chart on this slide visually represents the supports that we have in place. On the left, the large image of the regional network structure emphasizes that the largest source of support for transformation schools is from the regional staff. The smaller images on the right name additional supports that are in place for transformation schools, such as instructional coaches, acceleration academies, instructional rounds, funding for teacher leadership and more. I do want to mention that the district continues to make important financial investments in transformation schools. Transformation coaches support the improvement of teaching and learning. Steam specialists in elementary transformation schools provide enrichment and the scheduling flexibility needed for coaches to work with teacher teams. Social workers and family liaisons who started in transformation schools have been expanded to the whole district. And they, of course, remain extremely valuable at our transformation schools. Next slide, please. So I would like to close my portion of this presentation by summarizing what we see as successes during the first quarter of this year. The most important successes, of course, are taking place within our individual classrooms and our individual schools. But here are some district-level wins. Within the new regional network structure, we see a high level of attention and support being given to transformation schools. We are optimistic that our new structure will support our neediest schools. All 28 of our transformation schools completed and submitted strong quality school plans. Their instructional leadership teams are now actively using these plans to guide school improvement at the school level. And by November 10th, the end of the first quarter, we will have completed instructional rounds looking at plan implementation within classrooms in all 28 transformation schools. In our second quarterly update, we will be able to share details on plan implementation. And most importantly, student-level data in the areas of literacy and attendance and attendance. We know that's what you're most interested in hearing about and is most important to us as well. Thank you, and we will now transition to our school presentations. And it's my privilege to introduce Gru Elementary School Principal, Michelle Simon.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for that introduction. I am Michelle Simon, the very proud principal of the Gru Elementary School located in Boston's Hyde Park neighborhood. The Gru School is a tiny little school that is growing. We have currently 210 school, 210 students, excuse me. And our, our learners are quite diverse. We have about 80% of our students who identify as students of color. Some of the strengths in the Gru School are really centered around our shared leadership and practices across all content areas within the school community. And in fact, the QSP or the Quality School Plan that I will speak to in a moment was created and generated by the stakeholders within the school community. I'm very proud of the Gru School community and the work that we do around tier-one instruction and its implementation across all classrooms using the curriculum where students see themselves in their learning and also see reflections of their experiences and, and, and the experiences of individuals who are unlike them. Our Gru staff is very diverse, where 70% of our teachers identify as teachers of color. And many of these teachers also hold National Board certification or are currently working towards certification. Within this community of highly skilled educators, we have seen very high retention rates. And in fact, with the four open positions that we have had this past school year, those teachers transitioned within the school community into other positions where they now lead in building the capacity of other school community members. And you'll also notice here on the slide that our state improvement or accountability data has improved from the 12th to the 30th percentile based on our most recent MCAS data. So there are a lot of great things that are happening at the Gru School. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So now as we start to talk through our QSP or Quality School Improvement Plan, as I mentioned, this QSP was drafted with collaboration across many stakeholders and included including teachers and community partners. We are really excited to think through the work that we are doing around quality tier-one instruction at the school. And so with the stakeholders' input, we have really created this instructional focus here and the full implementation of high-quality tier-one instruction, not just across all classrooms, but also across all content areas. And within that, you'll notice, so you'll identify within the school building that foundations is implemented with fidelity across all classrooms in K-3. There is intentional planning time for teachers that is dedicated to data analysis and the critical consumption of the curriculum to ensure that the work that we are placing in front of students and expecting students to grapple with is in fact rigorous. This year, we also are really excited about the work that we are doing with our instructional coach and our science coach, also known as the B's Coach, to support the tier-one instruction and vertical alignment across grade levels. Next slide, please. Additionally, one of the highlights, one of the things I'd like to highlight on our QSP is our attendance. So we recognize that coming back to school post-pandemic presented some opportunities for us to rethink schooling. And so our, our, our goal around attendance is to really engage families as partners so that they are contributing to some of the practices and some of the instruction at the school to make a difference in the lives of our students. We have provided families with multiple opportunities to engage in the school community to build relationships so that we are seen as partners working with the families. Recently, we were able to shift the way that we've previously facilitated our open house and rebranded the evening to be called Open School Night. We were able to leverage the support of our community and our school-based partners to provide families and students with music, food and fun activities before opening the school doors to welcome our students and their families into our learning spaces. Given this shift, we were able to leverage the opportunity to build relationships and learn from families so that we may be better equipped in supporting the barriers to consistent and on-time student attendance. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I'm now going to transition to my colleague, Robin Lee, at the high school level.
Thank you, Michelle, and good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to briefly share about the Community Academy of Science and Health. Again, my name is Robin Lee. I have the privilege of being the school leader of the Community Academy of Science and Health, affectionately known as CASH. Originally, we were formed out of Hyde Park High School in 2005. And we are now located in Fields Corner in the former Grover Cleveland Building. We serve approximately 350 students of a range of backgrounds, primarily students of color and the different ways that those ethnicities are expressed. And we also have a very large range of diverse learners in our community as we do have 24% English learners in our community as well as 46.5% of students with special needs. We are proud to be a small school because we feel that being a small school affords us the opportunity to build really close relationships with our students and families. In addition, we're able to form strong relationships as a professional community and that really contributes to the strong professional collaborative culture that we have at the Community Academy of Science and Health. Next slide, please. Now to talk a bit about our quality school plan and our instructional focus, you'll see it here on this slide, I won't read it specifically, but I'll talk a little bit about of how it looks in action in our school. So our teachers and our instructional leadership team identify four high-leverage areas of improvement to focus on in our school community. Those areas include student discourse and engagement and ensuring that our students are seeing standards-based, grade-level content, content in every class as well as in their reading experiences. in their reading experiences, as equitable literacy is a focus in the district. We align all of our professional learning in both the school-wide professional learning and in our smaller professional learning communities, often known as, uh, common planning teams. We align all of that learning to addressing those areas of focus identified by our teachers and instructional leadership team. All of our professional learning teams do participate in data-driven cycles where we focus on looking at the data, developing lessons together. Teacher teams are able to, um, give feedback in their lessons, and we are able to try out those lessons and monitor the progress of students that are in different, um, learning spaces in those classes. We measure our school-wide progress through monthly learning observations. And we use indicators from our Equitable Literacy, um, Indicator Tool as well as some of the indicators from the Cryo Tool. Um, and I just want to take a quick opportunity to invite any school committee member who wants to join us on any of those learning walks that just to visit our school, you're always welcome. Next slide, please. Um, finally, I just want to touch on a little bit about our attendance. Uh, we know attendance can be a challenge, particularly in high school with older students. And one of the things that we're doing is really working to strengthen our tier ones and intervention strategies in our school. Um, we've been focused on how we really integrate more of a incentive plan for our students to participate, as well as working closely with our student support team and our attendance team, our supervisor of attendance to work with those students who are, um, having some chronic absenteeism issues. So, um, that's all I will share at this time about the Community Academy of Science and Health, and I turn it back over to Linda.
Thank you so much, Robin and Michelle, for sharing what all this looks like, um, at the school level. I can tell you, school committee members, these are two very dedicated school leaders who are not only reflective and intentional about their design for the conditions for learning and instruction, but do so in close collaboration with their school community. So I really want to thank them for, um, honoring us with their presence this evening and Mike also for all of his work. We're also joined in this team by Dr. Drew Eccleston, who of course is our Chief of Schools, um, and Accountability. And together, we would, um, love to hear, have a dialogue with you and, and take any questions that you might have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sabin, Ms. Simon, and Ms. Lee for the presentation. And thanks to the entire team for the tremendous work you do day in and day out on behalf of our students. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Questions? Mr. Carde Hernandez.
I will ask a question. I have many, but one, thank you for, to the school leaders. Thank you so much for your service and for this work. You know, I believe as a former turnaround principal myself, you are doing the hardest work, so. And, uh, so thank you, thank you. And then obviously to the team who brought the presentation for tonight. Thank you as well for, for your time and your effort. And I think, you know, of course, we, uh, the work of a governing body, we want to hear sort of the, the data points and want to get to outcomes and how the work that you're doing and the innovation that you're driving is accelerating for kids. Um, but I think this is a really important conversation for us to have to just think about how you're setting, uh, up the year, thinking about, uh, sort of the beginning of what might be our closest normal school year in a while. And so, um, thank you for that. I'm curious, uh, how you're structuring, um, uh, and this can be for, for one of our principals, but are also for, for the, the leadership. Um, how you're structuring collaboration, um, and sort of, uh, interdependence amongst the family of schools, and then also how that exists outside of that, uh, community as well. And so what ways are we, are we sort of, uh, bringing best practices to the table? But also in what ways is this, is this a team in it together?
Thank you for the question. I'll start and, and, uh, pass it off to Mike and Drew as well. But, um, that's such an important question because it's not just about, of course, it's important for one school's success and improvement, but it's really what are we doing as a system to support our schools? And that is also why in the past, um, transformation schools would have a separate set of plans that are due. A lot of these sort of what feels to be busy work, right? Um, to do rather than actually focus on the work at hand, which is why we really consolidated that. And we also didn't put a lot of additional demands, but to really be able to focus and simply, um, are intensifying the supports that are in place. So I'm going to have Mike talk a little bit about that and would love for school leaders to share too. What are your experiences? I think it's, it's helpful for us to know for the district to what are some growing points for us to do better as well to support you.
Um, thank you, Linda. I think by family, what comes to mind to me is the regional teams that we're building. And I think the best thing would be for me to hand this right over to Michelle and Robin to talk about their regions. And then since I work with all nine, I can add in anything, um, that, that should be added. But, um, there are six elementary regions and, um, the Gru is part of Region Six with Efren Tolodano as the, um, school superintendent and, uh, Cash is part of Region Nine, a high school region with Lynda McIntyre as the regional superintendent. So, Robin, maybe you could start by just talking about what the regional structure and supports and, and collaboration have looked like in the QSP and the rounds and other work, and then maybe, Michelle, you could add after that.
Sure, I'd love to. Um, so this year, the regions or the way the regions operate look very different. Um, we have all been assigned specific staff members to work with us. We all have like an equitable literacy coach. We all have, um, the, just the same group of, uh, district staff that are working with our regions. And in our professional learning time, the way that it looks different, I know in years past, I would, uh, choose different areas that I would like to, um, work on in myself in professional learning time. But we work together as a region now in professional learning time, and that gives us the opportunity in those region meetings to, uh, collaborate with our colleagues. Um, there are other leaders in, uh, Region Nine who are transformation schools. So when we were working, we spent some time working on our quality school plans. We were able to look at each other's plans, give each other feedback about the plans as we worked with the district members who were, um, in the meetings as well. So that's just been really, really helpful that I feel like we now just have a, a family that we'll be working with throughout the, uh, year as we work to, um, excel achievement in the schools.
Michelle, do you want to add something about what it's meant to you so far?
Absolutely. I just wanted to jump in and just add on to what Robin has shared so far in thinking about, um, what those regional meetings look like. So, um, to date, we've had, um, two or three regional meetings, and they take place in other school buildings within the region. And so during that regional visit, we are able to observe instruction in other classrooms. We're able to provide feedback on that to that school leader based on, um, equitable literacy practices that are observed during that time. And it really just provides an opportunity to collaborate in a way that we haven't in the past and gain some best practices that we can bring back to our own school communities.
Just invite Dr. Eccleston to share the work that he's been leading with all the regional school superintendents in the professional learning communities that, um, the principals are speaking of because that has also been a, a, a significant area of focus.
Uh, I couldn't possibly say it more eloquently than, than the two of them. However, I will just, um, also mention that from a system level, what we're also doing is during these times, like the school leaders mentioned, all of our professional learning is in our schools. We, we see this as an opportunity not only for us to observe practice, but if it's not happening there, then it means it's not happening across the system. And we need to make sure that we have the professional learning opportunities for our educators and our school leaders, and then we have the support from the central office to make that happen. And so one, one aspect of this that's really important, that's connected to the sort of system level, is that we have a, um, a, a equitable literacy, uh, observation tool that we're using collectively across all schools, uh, in the district to collect information about whether or not the practices are evidenced or not evidenced, um, in our classrooms. Uh, that's good data for us to sort of take a look at. We can disaggregate it by region. We can disaggregate it by school, not as an I gotcha, but as a really good sense, set, set of, um, information about where we are in terms of implementation and what we need to continue to do to push the practices that we know move outcomes for students. Yeah. And so I think the sort of tightness of all this, and a special thank you to the, to all of our school leaders who are doing this work, but most notably are, are transformation schools, who are really leading some of the best practices across the system that I think all of our school leaders could benefit from. And so a lot of this work has come out of the work that they have been leading for a number of years.
Just one more follow-up here of the twenty, if I'm understanding this correctly, and I'm, I'm sorry for my, any sort of confusion here, the, of the twenty-eight schools, all of them were identified in fall twenty nineteen?
Yes, so this is very confusing, I have to say, so do not apologize. But because of COVID, accountability status was held harmless, you could say. So the current list was identified in two thousand and nineteen. And some schools have exited through mergers or closures or other status changes, but DESI has the right to enter new schools or exit them, but that has not happened yet.
And then I guess in terms of sort of what's next, uh, obviously, we're fighting for improvement. We're fighting to accelerate outcomes, but at what point, um, do we feel like we've given it a fair shot and it's not working? And how do we make those decisions? And I'm, I'm thinking about this in, in relationship to some of the bigger conversations we were having just last week around, uh, consolidations and mergers and, and the use of space in our system, but also just the, the nature of investing resources in, um, sort of the more complex pieces of the organizations and sort of how much time is too much time? And how does the system think about this? This might be a question for, uh, for Dr. Chen, Mr. Sabine, but also for the superintendent.
So I, I'd, I'd love to weigh in with a quick thought on this and then pass this off to the, the more district level folks. But we're, what I'm very excited to see happening is that we're creating a flexible system that can concentrate support on the neediest schools. Now, hopefully, it will work very well, and these twenty-eight schools will progress significantly. But there will always be some schools that need extra support. And what, what I think we're developing is a system in which the family of schools, as you termed it, in the region is part of a very close-knit group with flexible supports that can be targeted to the schools that need it at a certain time. And at this time, it's these twenty-eight schools. But we're also learning to support our neediest schools at the same time, and some of them are going to progress quickly. But, um, Dr. Eccleston, I think you wanted to weigh in on this, or perhaps Superintendent Skipper.
Yeah. Drew, did you want to, do you want to go and then I'll?
No, no, go ahead, Superintendent.
So I, I guess my, um, I guess my initial thinking is that given the two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-one, it's very hard, um, for, for a number of reasons, right, to, to see traction. I think the other is that the regional network structure, which is a crux of the change agent in this, right, as far as the theory goes, is new. So, you know, I think, I think we're going to want to, you know, have a, a year or two of really looking at the data. I think the transformation schools have the opportunity to teach us a lot about a system as well. So things that jump out to me is just the over-representation of particular groups in our transformation schools where you concentrate need, but if you're not concentrating resource, then there's an imbalance. And so there's, there's things about the system that I think, you know, um, we have to learn from what we see with the transformation schools, both in how they became a transformation school and then how they make that progress. So, um, I think we, we take a year or two to look at this in this deep way to better understand the system before kind of making those kinds of, uh, those kinds of decisions, uh, long-term. That's, that's kind of my initial thinking on this because of just the, uh, the timing of all of it. We also don't, we also don't frankly know, given, you know, where the state to make those decisions about exit, which schools wouldn't be. What I will say is that in the past, and this is the, the thing I hope we, I know we won't do.
Excuse me, Superintendent, please slow down.
Oh, sorry. See, if I don't think about it, Chair, I talk too fast. Uh, um, so the other, um, the, the other thing that comes to mind, and, you know, in, in the past, we've called schools all kinds of labels, superintendent schools, turnaround schools. You know, what we're, what we have never been very good at is sustaining the conditions for, for change in a positive way. So in, in this group of schools with these amazing leaders, we have an opportunity not only to see them exit a status, but more importantly, to make sure we continue the supports that allow them to make that game. If all we do is shift those resources to the next group who are, who have, uh, you know, earned some title, then we won't, we won't actually be fixing the system. We're just shifting the resource. So that's what I think we have an opportunity to do, particularly in the regional model and particularly with this outstanding group of leaders, um, to really, to really make sustainable change.
And I would say there are also two additional aspects that we haven't had in the past in the, in this way is the ability to have progress monitoring because we have consistent measures so that we can be more proactive and not wait for MCAS scores as the only consistent measure. Um, and I think that being one, and the other one, just to add some more details to what the superintendent emphasized around the regional structure, is also making sure there are coherent supports. The last thing a school leader needs, particularly a school leader that's identified as transformation, is disparate, well-meaning supports coming into a building, but really just the focus on the consistent work and the quality school plans help do that because it's not just for the school who's come together to create a good plan and to execute it, but it's for the rest of us who are coming in to support. We're not coming in with different ideas. We're coming in to really support them and being able to focus on the work at hand.
This was really helpful. Thank you, and, and thank you both for, for your leadership and being with us late tonight.
Thank you. Other questions? I have two questions. I'll go while others are thinking. One, we've talked a lot about what's going on with the adults um, in terms of all the planning, et cetera. What's happening on the ground in classrooms? What is happening different for students, for parents, et cetera, as they are moving through this process as well? Anyone can respond.
Mine starting. So one of the things that we've been recognizing is as we change practice, a number of our students have gotten accustomed to our usual practice. And so as we are changing practice, we recno, we are recognizing that we have to change the culture of learning within our classrooms. And it requires that, you know, that we're going to get some resistance. So for example, student discourse is really big in our school, and the teachers not doing so much of the lift in the classroom, they should do all their work in their planning and all of, and when the learning is occurring in class, the heavy lift should be with the students. Well, we have students that have got grown quite accustomed to just asking for and, and asking questions and getting answers directly to the teachers, and, and, and I know the pandemic probably contributed it to. A lot of them, they don't really want to engage in discourse in the classroom. And so, um, so we're learning from them in this process that we have to be, um, diligent and persistent and, and, and in a lot of ways, teach them how to have discourse in classes again. Um, and that's what it's looking like in classes. And of course, you have some students that get right into it and they've, and you know, and they. And you know, and they engage right away. But then we have that group that we, you know, we're, we, we've discovered that we're having to develop some real protocols just around. Student, student discussion, you know, that they're, you know, helping us to learn that it has to come down to. Things that simple. So um, that's kind of what it's looking like in classrooms. But I can say I'm seeing more student discussion in classroom. I'm seeing more student engagement. I know that that's very important. Because they have to be the ones talking and learning, not just listening to what the teachers know.
Great, thank you.
I think uh, Robin said everything that I was going to add and I think um, it, this, this uh. Coming back from the twin pandemics has really presented an opportunity for us to rethink what we mean by schooling. Because we know that historically we have not done a great job across the nation of educating children. And so we're rethinking what that looks like, rethinking what parental engagement looks like. And not engagement for the sake of being present, but authentically having two-way conversation with families. To gather information about them and about their learners so that we can best provide supports in the school building.
The, the only piece I would add is not about how things are different. But maybe about how we're trying to act as staff in the central office, which is that the place that matters most is the classroom. And you heard both school leaders describe what's happening within their classrooms. And we're making sure that the regional staff and the district staff are there with school staff. Looking at these wonderful students in their classrooms and then talking about what the next step is. So we want to make sure that all of our planning ultimately is judged by what's happening. Within the classrooms, within the schools, and that's where we're trying to spend as much time as possible.
Great, thank you. My other question is about funding. You, you said that there were more resources coming in to support the work. My question is, are these district or DESI resources? Or are there, are they ESR funds as well? And if they are ESR funds, what plans are you making to figure out? Additional resources so that the supports don't go away when the funding may go away.
Um, that question will all hand to someone else about the future. But what I will say is the funds come from all three sources. There are large BPS investments. And there are s- large ESR investments and the state investments are not quite as large, but those are large as well. So there's all three sources of funds.
Thank you.
Three Chair, like, you know, I think this, this comes to the point I was making earlier, which is. We have a habit that once we start to see things get traction and work, we then, once it's working. We destabilize and then we move it to somewhere else. And I think we have an opportunity with our group of schools in the regional model to figure out, first of all, how to share across the region. Right? So there's an economy of skill that can happen of support in the regional model that doesn't exist in other ways. And I think we'll, we're looking at that from a budget standpoint going into the budget season. Um, and then I think, you know, being able to identify return on student uh, or student return on investment. So really being able to see what we've funded for support and what from the school leaders and community perspectives. Are having the biggest impact on students. Those will be the types of investments we want to be able to continue and sustain post. So that is going to be a factor in the future budgets to look at. And I think these, these twenty eight schools um, burst through in this way. Are going to help to teach us a lot about weighted student formula, what is needed beyond weighted student formula as it currently exists with the weights. Comes at a perfect time because we're, we're doing a deep dive of study of weighted student formula and whether or not the weights are accurate, not. What other kinds of value need to be in there. Um, so these, these, the transformation schools will be one of the, the keys. Of us looking at that kind of deep investment. And there's probably gonna likely need to be some, some deepen, some deep adjustments. Um, in the formula. So it's, it's, it's times and um. So yeah, so we're just very thankful that, you know, um, you know, the leaders like Michelle and Robin are, are here. Uh, with their schools and their school communities to kind of lead the way in this play for us.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions while we move on?
Madam Chair, I just wanna um, thank Mr. Dave and then Ms. Jen for the, uh, Dr. Ten, right? Dr. Ten, I believe, for the work on this and also the school leaders who joined us today. It makes such a difference to hear directly from you. Uh, thank you for sharing what is working and what the challenges are as well. So this is uh, critical work and really enjoyed the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, thank you very much and we look forward to your next quarterly update. Thank you all.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, certainly.
Um, I was just wondering what exactly the instructional coaches are. Um, and like, can you give like a breakdown of what exactly their um? Their duties are?
So an instructional coach is a, is a, an experienced, very skillful expert teacher. Who instead of teaching classes, is working with the adults in a school. And when your teachers are not teaching you, sometimes they're doing their own planning. But sometimes they're going to a meeting together and often these coaches are running those meetings. And they might train the teachers in a certain technique. They might go together and observe another teacher and learn from what they're doing. Or the coach might visit them in class. But the role of the coach is to help the teachers steadily get better at what they're doing. And um, it's a really helpful thing for teachers to have. Teachers usually love to have a coach in their school.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to both uh, Ms. Lee and Ms. Simon. Um. Uh, I'd just like to thank all the staff, um, and um. Go Chargers, I guess. I don't know.
Thank you. Alrighty, thank you so much. Our final report is our annual hiring and workforce diversity update from the Office of Human Capital. I'll now turn it over to interim Chief Human Capital Officer Ray Catchings and Chief Equity and Strategy Officer, Dr. Charles Grandson. Good, good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me, I just wanna uncover my background.
Thank you, oops.
Yep, there we go, sorry. I lost you guys a little bit. Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members and to all of the students and families tuning in. My name is Raisha Catchings and just as the Chair said, I'm your interim chief of human capital. I'm joined tonight by my team, uh, Megan Reed, who's your interim deputy chief of human capital. Adriana Hedy, our director of HR data and analytics. We're also joined tonight uh, by our partners in this work, the Office of Equity, Strategy and Opportunity Gaps. Which is led by Chief Grantson, who will introduce himself and his team before we get started.
Thanks Chief Catchings and good evening, School Committee Superintendent Skipper, the uh, and, and the greater uh, community. I'm Charles Grantson, Chief Equity and Strategy Officer. Uh, and we're excited to co-present with Human Capital the work of the Office of Recruitment, Cultivation and Diversity. Uh, currently, uh, for the purpose of this presentation led by Shar Gas and our act, uh, acting deputy chief, uh, Ekman Strategy Officer. Uh, and Rashawn Martin, our actor, acting director of recruitment as a part of our uh, equity and opportunity gaps team. Ray?
Thank you. Um, Annie is sharing her screen, but it's a little tough for me to. See it and present, so I'm just gonna do this. Um, so, as I mentioned, I'm the chief of human capital. Uh, tonight, we're gonna provide you an overview of the district's hiring for the last year. Um, and there is no doubt that the pandemic has completely disrupted our workforce. Just like it did for nearly any other industry. The pandemic has made us all think differently about our lives and particularly our workforce. Many of whom in our workforce um, has been on the front lines over the past few years. Burnout is certainly a reality. At the same time, we are experiencing staffing shortages, we somehow managed to grow our overall workforce to continue to meet the needs of our students. This has created the perfect storm in some ways for the challenges that we are currently facing. However, we are pleased to report that despite the challenges thrown our way, we are in a strong position to support our students. With the staff we have. Over the last two years, we've added a number of positions, um, over twelve hundred to be exact. Uh, many of positions that were added at the school level. Those positions include. Family liaisons, nurses, social workers, just to name a few. These positions were designed to support the students beyond academia. It will take time, but we believe that we begin to see stronger student outcomes because we're caring for the whole child. By ensuring our students' mental, physical and social emotional needs are being prioritized with these investments. Our students also need educators and school staff that racially, culturally and linguistically reflect them. We have room to grow here, but the information to come will talk through the current composition of our workforce. And the intentional work we're doing to recruit and retain educators that reflect the students and family, families we serve. So as we move into its presentation, um, Annie, I'm sorry, I can't see the uh. It's not showing up here for me, but if you go to slide one. Sorry. On slide two, we talk about how we've invested in the entire student. Since the nineteen twenties school year, BPS has added over one thousand two hundred and twenty-one positions. And those positions you'll see are covered from paraprofessional roles, teacher roles. Instructional coaches, social workers, family liaisons, school psychologists and librarians. This has been an unprecedented investment in our schools to support the entire child. Next slide. And for the twenty twenty-two, excuse me, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three hiring season, which starts between March first. Of twenty twenty-one and October first of twenty twenty-two, we have filled nearly. Twenty-seven hundred jobs. Um, overall, we have about thirty-six hundred jobs to fill. We have posted fifteen hundred teacher positions, six hundred and fifty-two parapositions. And seven hundred and eighty-four central office positions, which that composition could be school-facing. Roles that are centrally budgeted. You'll see this number here, um, as of ten one, we had eight hundred and thirty-eight vacancies across the entire district. But as of today, we're chipping away at it, seven hundred and ninety-seven of the hundred and fifty-two vacancies of uh. As of ten one for parents, we've gotten that down to a hundred and twenty-one. So again, our teams are working really hard to close the gaps on the unfilled positions. Um, despite hiring over a thousand, excuse me, an additional one thousand positions. From last year, we are eighty-six percent higher for our teacher vacancies as of ten one. Uh, again, this is a thousand postings more than last year and almost double the number of teacher postings. Again, large numbers, but in scale, we've made significant investments that have contributed to that. Next, I please.
Before we go to the next slide, Chief Catchings, just like to um, uh, add here that between March and September, the recruitment team held multiple recruitment fairs. This provided additional context in terms of our efforts, including a diversity fair, uh, fairs for experienced educators. Fairs for Latinx educators and fairs for multilingual educators. Um, and three uh, new additional uh, general fairs to support the hiring process this year. Giving the increase in numbers that Chief Cash has just described. Recruitment team also attended several in-person fairs, including three sponsored by the city of Boston, occurring at local neighborhood community centers. Additionally, we have twenty-eight hires uh, from our pipeline programs that we're really excited about. Who are currently participating in our fellowship and launched, and we also launched a paraprofessional exam support program. To assist uh, with paraprofessional hiring and transition, um, hiring uh, in per, per, paraprofessional positions. Given our unprecedented vacancies, as Chief Catchings uh, mentioned. We launched a community recruitment initiative in partnership with the Office of Human Capital, uh, communications, our community engagement team. And we partner with over one hundred faith-based organizations across Boston to support the recruitment effort. And we also reached out to over seventy local colleges and universities with the support of the city of Boston, Boston University. Cambridge College and many of our, of other amazing partners. Um, I'll end by saying, lastly, in anticipation of a very challenging recruitment year. Um, this past year and upcoming, uh, especially for diversity recruitment. We have uh, three additional recruitment ESR positions that we've added to the recruitment team.
Thank you, Dr. Grandson. And I should say, go, obviously feel free to jump in as we collaborate throughout the presentation. So here, when we look at the hires by school and the teacher vacancies that remain, you will see. Um, at the elementary school level, the middle school level and the high school level. There are uh, some concentrations of vacancies that in many ways may look alarming on its surface. But we can assure you that almost eighty of our schools have zero or only one teacher vacancy. Where you, we see the higher clusters of vacancies are inherently due to the larger schools. Not to call out any one particular school or uh, but a lot of our intense focus has been around supporting. Um, Madison Park, uh, Charlestown, the Henigan and Orchard Gardens. With uh, the higher numbers, again, those are some of our larger schools. Where we will naturally and inherently see larger concentrations of vacancies. Um. Go ahead, Charles.
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, so again, eighty of our schools have zero or one teacher vacancy as of ten twenty-four. Twenty-nine of our schools have two or three vacancies. And then uh, six with four and then four with seven or higher. Again, we have um. And many upon several occasions this year, my team, Charles's team. Um, we have been in school buildings and literally working through um, how we can get. Educators in front of the classrooms and to close out these vacancies. Next slide, please, slide five. Sorry. Here we'll talk about our overall workforce diversity. Before we get into our workforce diversity, for those of you who are new joining us, you will hear us talk about. Garrity and non-garrity educator positions. Just for a little context and background, the Garrity order is an order that requires BPS to achieve and maintain. Desegregated faculty and staff, specifically teachers and guidance counselors. The Garrity order says. That our teachers and guidance counselors should be, not be comprised of less than twenty-five percent black. And ten percent other minorities. In the appendix of this presentation, there is some extended context on uh, what it means, uh, the additional um. The additional background on the Garrity Court Order, but just for the sake of um, sort of talking through our newcomers on what. We reference, what we mean when we reference Garrity educators, we are talking about. Those educators who are teachers and guidance counselors. So for um, when we look at our overall workforce diversity for this year. Our staff is overall a majority staff of color. Our non-garrity school budgeted staff are most diverse group of employees. So of ten thousand employees, our school-based staff, which is about three thou- thirty-three hundred staff, sixty-six percent of those. Uh, school-based budgeted staff identify as folks of color. I'm gonna go to slide six. So here you'll see um, a, the trends of Garrity educators over the last five years. This slide, we usually carry forward year after year so that we can see the progress in our diversity hiring of our Garrity educators. And full transparency to our community. This is our third consecutive year of. This is our third consecutive year of growth in terms of educated diversity. The district's percent of educators who identify as people of color increased over one percent this year. And by over point five percent of an increase in the percentage of specifically black educators. We als- we also saw small increases for Latinx educators while Asian educators remained consistent. Black educators also make up a high percentage, twenty-nine percent of our provisional educators, which continues to show. The impact of our hiring initiatives. This year, twenty-eight percent of our first-year provisional teachers identify as black. Thirty percent of our s- from second-year provisional teachers identify as black. And forty-eight percent of our third-year provisionals identify as black. Slide seven. As we lean into diversity, context is critically important. It's important for us to note that the Boston Public Schools employs seven percent. Of the teachers in the entire state of Massachusetts. And BPS alone accounts for thirty percent of the state's educators of color. Forty-six percent of the state's black teachers, twenty percent of the state's Latinx teachers. And twenty-four percent of the state's Asian teachers. This data is based on information from DESI for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Um, just thought I would point that out, um, as we acknowledge and we continue to move through the challenge, we have, as we already have amassed. A significant number of the state's educators of color. And again, Charles, you can jump in whenever you'd like, so. Slide eight, um, as we again move back into. Over the last five years, these are our overall Garrity hires. Um, so when we look at this, this particular number, over thirteen hundred teacher and guidance counselors. Were hired this year alone, um, that's an additional five hundred hires over last year, which is. Uh, significant increase when we look at the five-year trend. Um, this includes internal candidates that are moving into new teaching and guidance counselor positions. Um, and then we'll talk about the external candidates, um. At the next slide, I also want to point out here, a lot of the work that we do to. Um, attract folks as we do a lot of work around pathways as well as supporting folks. Through the waiver process when they have, um, met, uh. A criteria for such that we believe a waiver should be granted, would be granted. And that they would quickly transition out of that status after receiving the supports that we offer as a district.
And I'm just, um, add here, uh, to what Chief Catching says to say that. When we look at, um, our, where we are in terms of our percentage of, um, Garrity educators of color, uh, decreasing. Is something that we as a team are really reflecting on and thinking about, you know, what are the additional strategies given where we are? Not just in Boston, but nationally, um, uh, with teacher hiring and teacher diversity. Um, and so given the, the five hundred, uh, educator increase, um, that Chief Ketching just described. Um, a lot of our efforts are about growing our own because, uh, overall, there is, um. Uh, not a lot of movement, especially, I, beginning in twenty twenty with COVID, not a lot of movement across districts with educators of color. Um, and then when you look at also, there was a dramatic increase in the number, um, of vacancies in addition to. Uh, the DESI emergency pandemic teaching license, um, and so. We're now seeing the impact, uh, of that license, uh, sunsetting. Um, whereas, uh, right in the middle of the pandemic, we saw a, a larger increase, um, because of some of those flexibilities.
Thank you. As we move into, uh, slide nine and talking about the external candidates that we've. Been able to hire that are covered under the Garrity Karen category, again, the teachers and guidance counselors. Uh, this school year, uh, we've hired more new to BPS. Um, educators that are covered under Gary than any in the past, uh, five years. This subset represents, um, excuse me, this slide represents a subset of the hires that we had talked about on the previous slide. Three hundred of, three hundred and forty-six of our teacher and guidance counselors hires are completely new to BPS. Although we saw a dip in the overall diversity. Of our external hires, this school year brought more external new to BPS than any other year. In the past five years. Again, like Chief Grant said, RCD, the Recruitment Cultivation and Diversity Team. Hosted three hiring fairs targeting candidates of color and multilingual candidates specifically. We hired two new recruitment managers and we worked with community partners. We engaged the city of Boston on four citywide job fairs, uh, again, all to increase. The new-to-BPS number here, um, it's critical for us, we were talking, we really wanted to connect with folks who. Um, we all think everyone knows BPS, but it was really critical for us to. Really dig deep and figure out who doesn't know that BPS is a career option, period, and that is where. We, uh, focused our efforts and we can see that we yielded some results as we have trended upward. Uh, when we look at the five-year trend, um. Not exactly where we want to be for, uh, diversity, but I think. Given the national challenges in our workforce, uh, this is something for us. To be excited about that we have been able to attract new folks to the profession and to, to our system as a whole. Uh, slide. Um. Here we talk about the internal candidates, which is for me, a tremendous bright spot that I want to call it attention to. Uh, compared to last year, uh, the number of pairs and substitutes who transitioned into teacher or guidance counselor roles nearly doubled. Um, that is really exciting for me, uh, to think that folks. See us as an employer and as a pathway for growth, um, and that is where we will continue to tap into. And it's exciting for folks to see that when. They are getting, uh, the edification they need as a para to transition into a teacher role. And leadership sees the work that we're doing and growing that layer of our organization, um, and it has. Really shown in the numbers, um, that paras are having an experience that is so rich. That they are prepared to move into the next layer of their career. Um, and of that group, seventy percent of those folks were people of color, so that is a tremendous bright spot that I think. We ought to continue to celebrate and dig deeper into as we move through, uh, our. As we continue to drill down in our strategies for lifting up, um. You know, educate, uh, folks into the profession rather. So again, our paraprofessionals were our most diverse source of internal candidates moving into the teacher and guidance counselor roles. We had nearly twice as many pairs transition into roles this year compared to last year. Our paraprofessionals represented nine percent of our overall teacher hires this year. Our excess teachers represent, also represented nine is equally subs, and then our provisional hires represented. Uh, twenty-five percent of our, um, provisional rehires, I should say, which is a good thing because that means. That that's our pathway to being able to close our Garrity gaps when we are able to move people through. The prob one, two, and three impermanent status, um, so we are making strides there as well. Then, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, if I may, I just, um, wanted to add, uh, to what Chief Catches is, is saying here. Um, you know, a part of this effort has also been, um, doubling down on the programming that we've been able to offer historically. Um, that's aided in this process, especially when you're talking about paras, uh, transitioning to, um. Uh, teaching positions, and so we've been able to, uh, increase by two, our, uh, coaches who work with. Uh, aspiring teachers in our Intel, uh, prep program. Uh, we've also hired a bilingual education specialist, uh, and a bilingual educator fellow, uh, to help. With preparation of, uh, bilingual educators, so really looking at as, uh, a resource, um, our bilingual paraprofessionals and other staff. Who want to transition into the teaching profession, um, and so we have candidates, they meet every Saturday, they've started, uh, this August. Um, who are in a part of that pipeline as well. Um, and then, uh, we have a few other positions that, again, as I mentioned earlier. We've been able to leverage, um, for, for S R funding, and what we, what we've learned over the last few years. Um, is it, it's really a connection between efforts to outcomes, and so. Whether we're talking about retention or whether we're talking about, uh, transitioning, um, staff from being Paris to teachers. The more, um, capacity we have to support individuals with this, especially with Intel Prep over five hundred. Um, individuals that were serving across the district and preparing for M T O Ls, uh, some of that data is also in the appendix. The more capacity we're able to provide, um, the more, um, gains we'll see in, uh, individuals, um. Uh, joining the teacher, teacher ranks.
Thank you. Slide eleven, um, here we take a look at the linguistic diversity across our, um. Garrity-covered educator positions. The Garrity hires and self-reporter fluency in the BPS language, uh, might have declined for this year, however, it is, um. Still remains above the fiber average when we look back to when we started collecting language proficiency. Um, so not as quite as high as the prior year, uh, but again, still above the five-year average. And, um, slide twelve, uh, when we look at. The five-year trend of our retirements, resignations, non-renewals. Um, all characterized as exits. Educators of color continue to exit the district at a lower rate than our, their white counterparts. Um, so our story here is that our retention strategies are working. Um, the programming that we are doing, offering through our equity strategy and opportunity gaps office, um. Is. Working in terms of the program, uh, excuse me, in terms of lowering the rate of exits among educators of color. Um, so we continue to see. An uptick in the number of exits over prior years, however, the proportion of exits who identify as educators of color. Is lower in proportion, uh, than the general population of Garrity educators. Uh, this means, of course, that we're losing educators of color at a lower rate than we are gaining them. Uh, resignations made up the bulk of Garrity exits last year, I think, um. Comprising of sixty-three percent of exits followed by eighteen percent of exits resulting from a non-renewal. Uh, provisional educator and about seventeen exits, seventeen percent, excuse me, of exits came from retirement. Um, that said, we're continuing to see these exits late, much later into the year than we have in other school years, um. I think over the last couple of years, as many folks have, uh, have experienced, uh, or witnessed. That, uh, folks are making life decisions, um, and they are transitioning, uh, but we are doing what we can to, um, excuse. Ease the rate in which folks are transitioning and also attract folks into, into the district as we can. But there are some folks who have earned the right to retire and we applaud them, thank them for their service. Um, but we are also, um, again, really taking a look at the exits that are due to resignation as folks make. Life decisions and what we can do about that.
And, and I'll just quickly add to that, um, so a part of the, uh, services that we provide in, um, our retention work. Um, is, uh, our, uh, educator, um, exit survey. Um, and this, you know, is consistent with what I just shared in terms of the capacity, and so. We send out emails, um, and we try to track folks down. Um, and we'll have more capacity, um, given our, uh, extra investments to do that, and then an opportunity to see how we embed that work. Um, as Esther Sun sets, um, as, uh, Superintendent Skipper, Skipper mentioned earlier. Um, but thirty-three educators of color participated in our exit survey, uh, this past cycle. Um, and we are studying, um, and looking at the trends from what we've seen so far. Um, things that cited, uh, reasons for the exits were, uh, lack of work-life, work-life balance. Uh, frustrations with school or district, uh, culture. Um, inability to move up, uh, and advance within their schools, uh, leadership, um, or central office departments. Um, or division hierarchy during, due to low turnover and mid, uh, upper management. And or lack of new leadership positions to apply to, and that's work that we try to address in our retention programs like MEAC and WAC. Um, and so our work is to use their feedback, uh, to inform retention strategies moving forward to help mitigate. As many access as possible as she kept, Chief Ketchings mentioned.
And thank you, um, this is a public document and we have an extensive appendix to talk about a lot of our programming. Um, but at this point, uh, we will, uh, open it up, well, turn it back to Chair and open up for questions, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Ketch, and Dr. Grandson for the report, and thank you to your entire team. For all the work they do on this critical issue, I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, thank you to Chief Grant and, and Chief Ketchings for this important presentation, and I'm sorry we had to delay both of you last week. So I know you had to stay late last week and then. Uh, we delayed it, but, um, I do appreciate, this is, this is really important information. And so just a, a couple of quick questions for you. Um. Looking in at particular that, that last set of information. About resignations and retirements and non-renewals, and thank you for breaking that out. I'm particularly interested in the resignation number, and I certainly know. As Chief Catching said, people are making life choices now, after, you know, post-COVID, people are reevaluating their professions and everything. We've also, i- it's a very hard job, right? There's no doubt about that, and I'm wondering. Could you talk for a minute, please, about what our exit interview process is? And how we try to look for an anomaly sometime, you know, they always say people don't leave a company, they leave a boss. Right? That's certainly true in the corporate sector, and, um, so what are we looking for? Do we often try to say to people, okay, maybe it's not the right fit, maybe there's something else for you? Uh, so if you could talk to me a little bit in particularly that resignation, because that to me is a big piece of our, um, retention. And then, um, separately, I want to ask you about the evaluation process, how we're doing on that, because all employees at every level of our district. Are entitled to an annual evaluation saying, here's the things you're doing well, here's opportunities for improvement. It has to be fair, it has to be unbiased, it has to be justified. And that is for everyone in the schools, it's also for our school leaders, it's also for our district administrators, all the way up to the superintendent, so. Um, if you could talk a little bit about the resignation piece and then about the evaluation piece would be helpful.
Um, Chief Catherine, I'm sure you can speak to, um, a number of those items, um, I did want to, um, after you were. We've spoken to those, um, just, uh, tag in, uh, Rashawn Martin, who's our in- inaugural retention specialist, um, and so the role was just created. In twenty twenty, um, and he's been able to get some, some great wins, um, uh, for the district in this area, so I'd like him to speak to the exit. Uh, survey question.
I'll jump in while, uh, Rashan gets queued up, uh, into your question around evaluation. Um, got some very raw data today that we're taking a look at too, and we'll get it over to you for a deeper dive. Uh, but when we look at the evaluation data for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um. For school leaders, we have a completion rate of about eighty-eight percent. Uh, for teachers, it's about eighty-three percent, um. And so when we look at, uh, scoo- excuse me, I'm just looking at this really quickly, trying to get you, get you some answers. Um, so there is, uh, just sort of some raw data here that I, I am able to share, and we have some numbers on completion. We have some numbers on completion. Exemplary proficient needs improvement as well. And so right now, we are trending at about for our educators. Right now, 66% are showing proficient. And then we have 15% exemplar, again, with an overall completion rate of about 83%. So I don't have this broken out by ethnicity or school level. This is just some high-level work group information that I'm happy to do a deeper dive with. But we
Thank you, Chief. How about for our school leaders and then for our central office staff? Because I think you said that that number, the 83, was for our teachers, right?
Yep. So for 80, for school leaders, we have 88% completion, 16% show exemplar, 71.6% show proficient. No one rated needs improvement or unsatisfactory. And then we have a couple folks who have some outstanding evaluations. And so, and then the central office folks relatively low completion rate, and I don't have a breakout of of the actual rating. We're about 55% of the managerial employees have an evaluation on file that's completed for the last year. And again, I don't have those ratings broken out, but I
That's fine, Chief. I was really looking more for that overall completion rate, just because and I've said this many times over the years, I believe every everybody deserves a full fear. How you grow, right? Here's what you're doing well, and here's your opportunities for improvements. And Superintendent, I'm sure that particularly that central office figure is something that's going to catch your eye, you know, I'm sure.
Through your chair, absolutely. You know, to your point, you know, part of our role as supervisors of our employees is to to give feedback and to help everybody to grow and learn. Evaluation is one of the tools that which we do that with, but it's an important one. So we'll we'll definitely take a look at the trends in each of the categories and figure out how to strengthen them, even in the ones that are in the 80s completion. You know, we want those to be higher and to reflect the, you know, the broad group of our employees.
And of course, Chair, we'll have to start thinking about the evaluation process for our new superintendent as well, because it's incumbent upon us to in that regard. And then also the the question about the exit interview, I think, or the or the resignation and retention. And I see Mr. Martin there. Nice to see you again, sir.
You too, Mr. Neil, always a pleasure. So I'll just real quick speak to the work. So our retention work primarily is about supporting and staying connected with our educators of color really consistently throughout the school year. So I reach out to the community once a month to basically, at least to basically check on, you know, how, you know, how folks are doing and then having conversations about opportunities. So so we actually have been able to reduce, you know, our retention, I mean, well, rate, right? Meaning, you know, lower that that percentage because of these conversations of making sure that our provisional folks have the information they need to to be eligible for for continuous waivers, right? To show adequate progress towards getting licensure. And and then also helping people find other opportunities. Because yes, maybe, you know, maybe you might not be in the perfect situation, the right environment in one school. But 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 you might actually, you know, be great in, you know, in a different school or in a different grade level. But but how do we help you find those opportunities, you know? And so, and we also have had a number of our folks from 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 the school base who've also transferred, who also transitioned into into central office roles. Now, where I lose some of the numbers is that, you know, if 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 I move from, you know, the grew up to the central office and we don't backfill my position with another black educator, then, you know, then, you know, then it's not really a pickup. So when we get to the to the to the actual resignation point, it's actually really last resort in our in our in our work. And what I am finding is that, you know, folks may decide that they're making transitions, you know, for family reasons. You know, some folks have have rarely have recently have been able to find flexibilities in terms of being able to work, being able to work remotely. Or sometimes you might even, you might even hit a ceiling. And this is where we try to figure out what other kind of professional professional growth or advancement opportunities can we find for our people who want to do it? Because maybe you rarely wanted a leadership position in some capacity here in the B P S and you just weren't able to get there. And maybe because we, maybe because we actually hired a person of color for the one spot we only had. So that other person found another opportunity in another district to do the same work. And what I would say, we have had, we've had, we recently, we've had had a good good work in the space and also having a number of people return to the district too, after after a couple of years elsewhere. So, yeah, so I would say we're we're doing the retention work sort of ongoing. And when someone has an exit interview with us or completes our survey, it's really at the at the very, very end of of our ongoing, of our ongoing conversation to do what we can to to provide every opportunity to give them reason to stay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin and Chair, I'm out of time, so I'll stop.
Thank you. Mr. Maye.
I think Rafaela had her hand up first.
Okay, I I'm usually calling on you, by the way, that you're showing up on my screen, so I'm sorry. When it pops up, I don't know who is her. So anyway, I'll go to Ms. Palanco Garcia and then come back to you and to Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, my friend. Gracias por la presentación a todos el equipo que ha estado trabajando.
Thank you for the presentation to all the team who's been working on it. And thank you, Diego, for the for being such a gentleman.
tengo curiosidad de saber de las siete capacitaciones que ustedes realizaron.
I feel curious about the seven trainings that you conducted.
Cuantos empleados bilingües que fueron capacitados fueron contratados.
How many of the bilingual employees were hired?
That's the the question, I should make sure I don't.
Yeah.
Okay. And so I'm going to Chief Ketchings, I don't know if you all, if your team is able to pull that data this quickly, but I'll just ask Rashawn Martin to speak to some of the inputs and the efforts. So the numbers in terms of those who attended.
Yes, so we had, and I'd have to find it, sorry, down somewhere. So in terms of the the number of folks that we have in the in the program, while they're they're currently, while the the bilingual educators who are in the who are in our in our current program are in the are in the pre-service aspect of the program. So it would actually be our goal to have all, well, all six, you know, of the current candidates who are in the program to be hired in in the B P S for for next for next school year. So in terms of the in in terms of the training programs that were that we're offering and those, and then those members would then automatically be enrolled in our fellowship program in in terms of receiving receiving initial licensure by the end of by the end of of the following of the following school year. In terms of, in terms of general bilingual, you know, educators who who attended any of our our general fairs, especially the the multilingual fair, we would actually have to have to get to follow up and would be happy to get back to you in terms of the in terms of the return on on that hiring.
Sí, muchas gracias. Me quiero, me encanta ver esto porque en nuestro distrito es un distrito que tiene una alta población de aprendiz del idioma inglés.
Thanks a lot. I love seeing this because our district has a very high population of English learners.
Okay, entonces mi segunda pregunta va dirigida, es un comentario y una pregunta también.
Thanks a lot. My second question, which is a question and a comment as well, is
en pude ver en la gráfica que el 5.9% solo tenemos, repito, solo tenemos un 5.9% de líderes escolares bilingües.
I could see in the graphic that we only have 5.9% of bilingual school leaders.
Y hemos estado hablando de la importancia de incorporar líderes escolares que sean bilingües.
And we have been talking about the importance of incorporating more bilingual school leaders.
Entonces mi pregunta va precisamente allí. ¿Qué estamos haciendo? ¿Qué está haciendo? ¿Qué plan tiene? ¿Qué motivación están presentando a los líderes escolares para que vengan a nuestro distrito?
So that my question goes there. What are you doing and what's the plan? And what are you use, we using to motivate the bilingual school leaders to come on board and work with us in the district?
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Ms. Palanco Garcia. I think my my take on that is us being able to have consistency with our programming, similar to what Superintendent Skipper mentioned in terms of what we do in terms of school transformation. It is time to invest in the program, to try it and to see it mature over time. Our bilingual educators accelerated community to teacher program, for example, is just being launched this year. And I think as we're doing that, it does provide us an opportunity to think about what that looks like for a sort of school leader pipeline development. What we know for sure, and looking at our programming over the years, is that folks are not going to automatically come to us. And so our efforts are going to have to be doubled down and going out. And so we've also have an external recruitment manager position funded through ESER that is going to sustain our work in terms of going out out of Boston, out of Massachusetts, to Hispanic-serving institutions, to HBCUs and looking for bilingual candidates and looking for diverse candidates. And so that's new above and beyond what we've typically done. And then it's going to be also being really intentional about our work that we have with our partner colleges and universities. So right now, we have about 13 memorandums of understanding with colleges and universities locally, where we have our candidates in our pipeline programs, working with them to get complete bachelor's degrees and in some cases, master's degrees. I think it's going to mean us really intentionally having a track for bilingual candidates in order for us to increase in that particular area. And that's something that I know Superintendent Skipper and I have discussed. So we look forward to to working on that.
I am. Hi, I, my infant deputy is Megan Reed, who is on loan from our leadership development team who focuses intensely on the recruitment, development and placement of school leaders alongside Dr. Monica Hall. So I'm going to ask Megan to tap into her expertise here as well.
Thank you. Can folks hear me? Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. I'm Megan Reed, and as Ray said, my former position was in leadership development. So I'll just speak briefly to our recruitment and our emphasis on diversity in school leader hiring. I do want to clarify that the slide that's in the appendix that we have is representing the new school leaders we hired this year. The overall diversity of the school leader corps and the languages that they speak and the number of leaders that are bi or trilingual is different and higher than in the ones that are represented in this slide that we've hired this year. We can definitely get folks that overall number. We, Dr. Monica Hall and I, and now Dr. Monica Hall, have made it a top priority to maintain our school leaders in their positions who are bilingual, bicultural or multilingual, multicultural school leaders, as well as hire diverse candidates for our school leader positions. We've been successful in that. In we have a majority of our school leaders as school leaders of color and we've increased the number of school leaders who are bilingual or multilingual. We do this by the partnerships we hold, Latinos for Education, our partnership with PSI, our partnership with Lynch Leadership Academy. And through our very pronounced and very focused efforts with those partnerships to set our goals for the number of individuals that we admit into those partnerships that are multilingual. And so those partnerships are a great source of the candidates that we have that are multilingual. Additionally, when we do recruitment fairs, when we do targeted reach out, when we are on, when we have internet presence, we are sure that we are advertising through places that reach candidates that are multilingual and multicultural and that we are recruiting with folks who are representative of the cultures of the leaders that we would like to have in the district. So I'm happy to speak more about it, but I don't want to take too much time. But really appreciate the question because it's extremely important to us and to the kids and families that we serve.
Thank you. Mr. Maye.
Okay, I have a few questions, so I'm going to kind of go rapid fire. So just a quick clarifying question. With the, on the first slide, when it says we've added this many people, just be clear, that includes replacements of people who have retired or moved to different districts. Or is that just new positions?
That is, I know you have a couple of questions, but I'm just gonna, we'll knock them down together. That is new positions, bodies added to the district. So, excuse me, let me say this differently. New positions, allocations, rather.
Okay, great. And my second question is looking at new to B P S educators. It's great that you guys are expanding outside of B P S. But are we? Never mind, I just, best in the appendix, I just remembered. And last question, do we have any plan, not plans, but any like concrete, this is what we're going to do, plans to increase educators of colors, specifically Hispanic, because right now that's the most underrepresented compared to our population and as well as bilingual?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm, I think Chief Grantson, I'll let you jump in with regard to the programming that is available and launched and specifically targeted for Mr. Meta's question.
Hey, great. Thank you, Mr. Meta, for that question. You know, I think I want to go back to and address what was mentioned in public comment, but also what Chief Catchings mentioned in terms of, you know, we are mandated in this work for Garrity educators, twenty-five percent black and ten percent other. But we've made a commitment as a district and I think Superintendent Skipper recognized, announces as well that our commitment is to achieving a workforce that reflects the students and families we serve. And so we fully recognize that we have a long way to go in the gap between our Latinx students and educators. A few of our initiatives, one is I am really excited about the work we're planning around partnering intentionally with Hispanic-serving institutions. I think that it's going to be really important for us to not only, in addition to our Grow Your Own work that we're doing here, in addition to try to lure other educators from surrounding districts, it's going to be important to try to also bring in educators from across the country. And that also means partnering with the city on things like housing and supports when they get here. So there's a sort of longer term strategy for that. I think in the short term, we're really also relying on when we start to look at the data, the numbers around the amount, the number of pairs who are Latinx that we have in the district and how can we intentionally reach out to them, cultivate them, support them, get them enrolled into bachelors and masters programs. And over time, as we're able to, over a two or three year period, as we're able to get them prepared for the teaching ranks. And then, of course, I mentioned earlier, our bilingual educators accelerated community to teacher program. And so we referenced here that the numbers are small right now, but as we add additional capacity, and I know that's our plan for this year and the next year, we'll be able to reach out to more and get more paraprofessionals and not just paraprofessional substitutes and career changers enrolled in that program. Folks can do that after work hours and be engaged in that program so that we increase the number of bilingual and Latinx educators in that way. Those are our three main strategies, and I think one of the ones that we've talked about also is around, we did a small pilot last year from a DESI grant for hiring bonuses for Latinx educators. And I know that's something that Superintendent Skipper wants to further explore for this upcoming hiring season.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm excited to hear that. And the last thing is more of a suggestion than a question. And this kind of applies to the specific thing, but to like a lot of things. So like, it's not really. But like, when looking at the diversity charts, it's it's, I feel like it's kind of incomplete solely because I can't tell, like, there's no mixed option and like, there's also like, for some people who are with them, one, they'd be forced to pick. Yeah. I don't know, just one of my complaints, but that's a complaint with everything, so.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Thank you so much again for the presentation. I too have some rapid fire questions, but we'll try to get through them quickly. I guess what, year over year, I think, I'm going actually to some of the beginning, to the beginning of the deck just around our current vacancy level. Can you help me understand at this time last year, how many vacancies there were and it can be those sort of some total remaining vacancies?
I will. I have. We're getting those now, so can I hear maybe second and third and then give my team some time, dig?
My second question may change, but I guess there is a curiosity around how is the current state of play different from years past? I think it then leads a question for me. So once you're getting that data, just around this current expansion, you know, like, as we continue to grow, are we unable to backfill the positions that we need to backfill? And so does it make growth as a strategy the right one and sort of investment poorly spent? I guess, so that's sort of, once we get that answer, I'm sort of, I have a curiosity there and I, you know, I think as you may know, I had concerns about that as we approved the budget, that we were trying to grow too many positions and we would have vacancies in schools, which is, you know, was my fear. The second piece here I have is around the para vacancies. I'm curious of the hundred and twenty-one now that are remaining, how many of those are for one-to-one pairs versus classrooms?
So that one, sorry. I see my ping's going off. We can, for that one too. So that, so the the one-twenty-one was just your general pairs, one-to-ones are, give me one second. See if I can get this out so quickly. Twenty-two are listed as one-to-one.
How many, how many, say that again?
Twenty-two.
So, and then I guess, and this is true for all of the positions, you know, my head and heart is always thinking about sort of the most complex programming problems and our students obviously need the most supports. So as we're thinking about the vacancies, what happens for those students, and I'm thinking about classroom pairs, but also the one-to-one pairs, who don't have a permanent placement or don't have a permanent support, rather, and then the same is true for classroom teachers. What happens to those classrooms without a permanent teacher and is it a rotation? Is there a standard operating procedure and is that a rotation of support or a rotation of people or is there a designation where someone is consistently in that role until it's filled? And I'm thinking about this from a family experience, like what can I expect while I'm being told there's not a permanent person in the role?
Great question. I think, and I know a ton of people probably want to dive in on this too, but I will take the ACR systems level approach because I can tell you what I've experienced when having to swing a pulse on vacancies throughout the hiring season. And I know that as we got closer to September, our district tried to pivot it to how do we then start to look at school level coverage plans and following up with each individual school leader, looking at their staff templates to help them really move the chess pieces in a way that made sure everyone had an adult in front of them day one, while also still continuing to work to fill vacancies. So although we had a systems level approach, we did at one point pivot to the intense support around what is your, the coverage plan for your school. We have through special education, coverage pairs who are deployed. We have substitutes who have been deployed to fill vacancies, many of which have if they were slightly under the criteria or waiting in a waiver pattern, we were able to get them onboarded as subs so that, you know, it may technically show as a vacancy, but we have a sub in there who is literally waiting on deck to transition over to be that classroom teacher of record. So it really looks different in every single school, what their coverage plan might be.
And does the family know what the classroom cover and school-based coverage plan is?
It's a great question. I might have to hop on one of my colleagues. In general, I know, go ahead. I heard somebody come off of me. Sorry.
That's me. It's me through your chair. And Lauren, I think you can, you can also answer this on the special education side. So if a student requires a one-to-one, that will always fill that with a sub to make sure that the student is supported. Same thing with, you know, if you have a classroom for safety ratios, like an ABA classroom, that's always going to be a priority in the fill. Consistently, we try to keep the same person, you know, because of the relationship piece. And schools have a variety of cluster subs and then they have building subs that routinely are assigned to that building. So, you know, we, our goal is to always fill those positions as quick as possible, but we're never going to have a student's need unmet in that, in that case. Same with a teacher. You know, we're always going to look for a sub that's licensed in that area. There are particular disciplines such as science that we're seeing a statewide shortage for teacher availability. That's one of the harder ESL is another one, which obviously is a service. So that's another one we try to prioritize. Sometimes that requires shifting of ESL coaches in order to be able to fill that need. But anything that's service oriented, we try to, we try to prioritize. Lauren, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that?
Yes, thanks Superintendent. The only thing I would add is that in addition to having coverage subs that we hold centrally, is we have also engaged with several staffing agencies to provide additional supports to schools around ABA supports, one-on-one supports, speech and language and other kind of critical service needs that we have. So we can deploy folks very nimbly as we need to.
The final question here, and I hope we can get the year-over-year remaining vacancy data too, but my last question here is as a family, if I have a child, and I'm thinking about our families sort of on a more basic level, but I think this could be addressed as students advance in grades. If I have a child who is sitting in a classroom without a highly certified teacher, do I have a transfer option and am I aware of it? Because I can assume based on enrollment patterns, there are classrooms that are not full with highly certified teachers and classrooms that remain without them. And so if, if there's a seat somewhere with a teacher who is certified, am I being made aware of it and can I put my kid in that school?
Someone wanted a question before we get back to the year-over-year hiring?
Yeah, I was just going to say, through each other, to the best of my knowledge, the answer is no. So, you know, where transfers used to come in is if a school had a certain designation, then students and families had an ability or a right to transfer to a different school of higher standing. In these classrooms, often we resolve the fill fairly quickly. So a student that's been in a school for years and then they end up, say, in second or third grade for a period of time without a highly qualified teacher until we're able to fill it, you know, most, most families aren't going to kind of up and go. So we just try to concentrate on getting that position filled as quick as possible. You know, where our shortages are right now is, like I said, with science, so it's very content specific. To Ray's point, there's eighty percent of our schools don't have any shortage. I think the Madison issue is directly tied into CTE in general in what we're seeing like statewide in terms of getting CTE teachers into vocational CTE program. So, short answer is no, to the, to the best of my knowledge, we have not had that policy. You know, that would mimic more like a status of a school and the ability to transfer to a, a school of a different standard.
Superintendent Skipper, if I may, just add, apologies, you do get notification if your student is in a classroom without a highly qualified teacher as designated by their licensure and those notifications are coming out at the end of November.
Thank you. Go ahead.
No, I just, I'm over time, but I'm curious if you have the answer to the first question.
Yes, we do. So for last year, ninety-two percent of our your guidance counselor Garrity positions were filled around this time, ten-twenty-nine. And around this time, we had about seventy active postings. And so I think just naturally you'll see we have a larger volume that has also contributed to this problem of having some remaining unfilled vacancies too.
So, there were seventy active postings compared to the eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight active.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should clarify here. Overall, and I know Adriana's listening, so she's probably going to pull it up. For Garrity positions, so your teachers and your guidance counselors, there was only seventy postings last year this time. This year, there was a hundred and eighty-three. So that's the.
Yeah, that's really helpful and it's really helpful and I, I'm just saying this as a parent, if my kid was sitting in a classroom with, and I'm thinking, and I'm saying this as a parent of a kid in elementary school, and I knew that there was a seat and the system notes somewhere else with a highly qualified teacher and they are not tapping me for that seat, I would feel really frustrated, but I also, the problem is big and I, as a governing body, I'm like saying it again, like, we have to be mindful of our ability to keep growing personnel and not being able to fill the positions. We are double the number of vacancies last year and I, and last year was high too, so. But I, that does not take away from the incredible work that the office is doing to drive the fill, you know, like you didn't create the sum total, but you're, you're, you're driving hard to fill it and I see that and I think the ingenuity here is really smart. I'm out of time, so thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Most of mine are really about how you've reported the data and so I'm going to ask for some either additional slides or some additional notations to slides, just to begin to understand the magnitude of what you're working with. So one, on, I think it's slide number four. Can you, I can, I don't know if you can pull that one up?
Oh, you want to, I can see it.
Yeah, to see it so I can explain to you well what I'd like to see done to it. Yeah. Could you pull that one up?
Sure. Thank you, Annie.
Right. So as you've showed the numbers, is there a way that you could also add to this both the, you know, so what you have filled, can you show us what the diversity issues are in what those filled positions look like? And, and I'm not sure strategically if in the vacancies that you want to hire, you all have particular types of folk that you would like to see filling those positions. Because what I'm trying to get at is, it just feels like it is a massive number of the, the number of teachers we need and the diversity, but then how do we go back to individual schools to begin to look at what are those school, you know, what do the faculties look like in those schools? What are the positions held by a variety of people of color or people who are speaking different languages? So that as you begin to look at cohesively at a school's faculty, it's really beginning to do more of matching the needs of the students that are actually there. Because these numbers don't give me a good sense of, you know, strategically what we're, what you're trying to focus on versus, you know, the large number of open seats and, you know, getting warm bodies with, you know, skills in them is critical, but is that really helping our diversity mandates? As much as we need them to?
Yeah, Chair Robinson, I would just say, I think that definitely has been the struggle over the last two years with the pandemic and just dramatically shifting. um, just dramatically shifting um, uh, hiring and workforce uh, trends. Um, and I think what you described in your question is exactly the challenge um, we're experiencing. And so I was at a roundtable on teacher diversity dashboards um, uh, a few weeks ago with um, school leaders and some of our school leaders who are the most committed uh, to this work around uh, educated diversity. We're, we're like, you know, we, we need help. We just need, we need teachers, right? We need uh, uh, qualified adults in front of kids. Um, uh, and so it has been a challenge for us to think creatively about, okay, what can we do above and beyond the things that we've been doing, given sort of what we have locally? And then that's where that external, I think push is gonna um, definitely have to come. Um, I think one of the things we can't do enough of also is to double down on things like Intel Prep, continue to lobby DESI for certain flexibilities. Um, the, you know, I think it's worth going back and studying the impact of having so many more educators hired, um, uh, educators of color specifically hired because the emergency license, all you had to do was to go on DESI website, pay the fifty bucks. Um, and you know, click the button and you got the license, right? And so um, there's something to that. And then there's a piece around like how we then support those people, those individuals when they come in. Last thing I would quickly share is that we have um, moved um, over the last two years from diversity-focused schools, so focusing on just um, a few of our schools with the most um, imbalance, um, diversity uh, wise. And now every school in the district annually has to set diversity goals. Um, and the goals that they set are based on the actual vacancies that they have in their school, right? And so if I don't have a lot of turnover and I only have one vacancy, well, that's gonna impact what kind of goal I set for that particular year. Um, and we've increased our efforts for school superintendents, working closely with the Office of Human Capital to monitor um, the diversity of the hires that are submitted. And, and tell that a hire um, has a clear rationale for the diversity, it, uh, human capital actually won't even process the hire. So that's a major uh, uh, innovation and change um, that's happened um, within the last two years.
Okay. I, I have a similar question for the issue with language needs. You know, are we looking carefully at what we need in terms of second language speakers? So that more of our children who are in multilingual learning programs, particularly learning English, have a critical teacher that speaks their language as a major part of their day-to-day education?
Well, I would just speak to, um, the answer is uh, yes, as we seek to do multilingual recruitment. Um, and I did find a number, you know, we had sixty uh, candidates who spoke another language other than English uh, show up at our multilingual uh, recruitment fair um, back in the uh, back in the spring. Um, so we are certainly trying to um, identify what um, the language uh, needs are. And um, and, 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 and then trying to recruit. Really across the board, we certainly need people who can speak Spanish, but we're aware of the need for, you know, uh, for, for Mandarin and Cantonese or Haitian Creole. Um, you know, uh, and, and other, you know, Arabic, you know, um, the, the languages uh, that are um, uh, that our student speaks. So I think in general, you know, we're, 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 we're seeking anyone who can speak, you know, another, you know, you know, any other language for that matter, and then doubling down in terms of um, in terms of where some of the highest needs are as a recruiting for our prep programs and just recruiting, you know, for hiring uh, in general.
With multilingual educators, do we also look at the high school level for people who have the ability to teach critical subjects, math, science, history, et cetera, in languages other than English as well in terms of our recruitment?
Oh, yes, because when we, when we held, when we held that fair, uh, and when we hold that fair and uh, and, and we do it uh, and, and we do it annually. And uh, and now moving forward, we'll, we'll seek um, to see if we can do it multiple times throughout the, throughout the process, if we, you know, have the, you know, capacity. Well, so the, the fair was actually designed to recruit for um, uh, first for um, to be able to teach um, across the K to twelve spectrum. So whether if you're an elementary teacher, or whether if you're a secondary educator who, who, who taught, um, you know, who could teach science or, or history or, you know, or, or any other subject that we offer. Uh, and then in addition, do you also, you know, speak um, uh, uh, another language? You know, um, and we also were, you know, certainly encouraging, you know, anyone who also had the skills to also be able to, you know, to teach the subject, you know, in that, um, also in that languages, in that language for the purposes of, of certainly of some of our, um, you know, uh, dual language programs.
Thank you. Um, I do have more questions. I'm out of time and time. And I wanna, before we close out, I wanna ask if there's anybody that has one more burning question. Um, but at the same time, I know there's a lot of information here, and I hope that everybody will review the the slides again, and please ask more questions of the district as we look at into this very important issue. Mr. Um, O'Neil.
Yes, Madam Chair, just a very quick question. When I, when I do the math, um, I look at, you know, the eight hundred plus openings and a workforce of approximately eleven thousand, which is what a seven point five percent vacancy rate, and clearly it's high and we're concerned about it. And I appreciate out the beginning of the presentation, um, Chief Grantson uh, mentioned, or maybe it been Chief Catchings about vacancy rates in other districts as well, which is typical for us to look at. But I also think about the unique requirements about being in the city and the residency requirements, et cetera. So how are we comparing against other city departments? Because I, I, I've heard of at least one of them. I think the library is up about a, uh, or the libraries overall is up about twelve percent. So do we have any sense of how our vacancy figure is compared to other city departments, uh, you know, that are also dealing with a lot of the issues that we're dealing with, trying to hire in the city, high cost of living, residency requirements, et cetera?
Um, we, we really don't have that comparison available. Now, I do uh, remember working with our counterpart over at City Hall who was actually doing some pairing down. We could get that information for you. Uh, when we, we have been petitioning the residency commission um, to help us move through um, the residency barrier, particularly for some of our lower wage roles, um, which is also included in some of their CBAs historically. Um, so we have been getting really creative when we think about, um, you know, our bus monitors and just critical roles that um, inherently have the residency impediment. We've been working with the residency commission to try to help with that. I do know that our other city departments have been doing the same thing as well for some of their critical shortage areas as well. So not, don't have a number on how we compare, but I do know that we were at least one of six departments to petition the residency commission on, um, getting some relief around. Um, uh, uh, how the residency impediment for these critical jobs we have. They did waive the requirement for some of our lowest wage workers, and we are continuing to report them on that waiver. It's a temporary one. It's not permanent. It will, there are some triggers to reinstate it should we uh, consistently hit uh, eighty per, eighty or eighty-five percent staffing level amongst those work groups. But for now, it does provide us the immediate relief that we need in order to get folks in the door and get um, students served. But I will give you that number of how it compares across the district, the state.
Thank you, Chief Catchings. Appreciate it.
Uh, and through your chair, uh, just uh, on that point, um, this is a topic of conversation in, in the city cabinet meetings. Um, some of the same departments that struggle uh, are the same as ours. In fact, the CDL program that Transportation's launched uh, in order to fill bus drivers, uh, the city is actually working with us on so that they can fill the need of licensed uh, uh, CDLs uh, in their positions. Uh, it's in the double digits. It varies department to department. Um, so you know, every, everybody's struggling and trying to share. In fact, we've been talking creatively about how to be able to share each other's postings, other opportunities to uh, have employees work uh, kind of across the units. Um, so I think we're, we're really trying to look at, um, you know, an all, an all ideas approach.
Sorry, I was muted. Mr. Cardad Hernandez? Sorry.
I, I think this one is quick. It'll be, it will go faster than my last one, but I, he, thi- this one's simple. We're talking a lot about the sort of recruitment efforts. I'm curious. Um, and in that, you know, in the past, we've, we have, and I know we couldn't discuss it here because of labor implications, but I've tried to discuss the possibility of uh, sign-on bonuses and retention bonuses. I'm curious for our retention efforts, if we're seeing an increase in the number of folks leaving year over year. You know, there are sort of two problems of practice. It's like getting people in the door, but also stopping the bleeding. I'm curious around strategies that we're, that we're executing and implementing around uh, some of that and some of those issues and how we're addressing that problem of practice.
Well, I can certainly speak to the efforts we've been doing around our educators of color. And um, and I think that the percentage of the um, of the teacher exits that identify of educators of color, you know, haven't, haven't gone down each of the last, you know, three years since we directly started the work in twenty nineteen, you know, by, by hiring a retention specialist, um, which actually was myself. And, and so we began to provide direct support, you know, to all of our educators of color, but especially our early educators of color, you know, that were more likely to use, lose, or because the studies show that you're more likely to lose an educator in those first three to five years, you know, um, than you are, um, than you, than, than you are after that. So by being intentional about our, you know, about our professional development opportunities, by our licensure support, by our affinity group um, spaces that we've created, um, by um, by our Lana programming where we get people together, you know, monthly, you know, on a monthly basis to be able to, you know, to be able to network, um, having opportunities to connect with the superintendent, even though I haven't had um, Superintendent Skipper have a chance yet to come visit the um, affinity groups, but we'll get it, we'll get that on our calendar um, soon. Um, and we even, you know, and we even started a peer mentor program, you know, named after the late Keith Love, um, which uh, which we're continuing this year that we launched last year uh, to directly, you know, target our, you know, our educators of color. Um, so uh, so we believe um, that, you know, that those direct supports um, are um, um, are working. Um, and, and we're gonna wholeheartedly return to that work now that, um, you know, now that we're, you know, beginning to, to refill some, you know, some posi- some positions that we've had vacant uh, in our, uh, in our office. Um, and you know, and, and so, um, yeah, and so I think, um, I, 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 I think the data shows. And so while we certainly will be, will be hoping that, that, that the overall number of educators who, um, you know, who leave the district, you know, will, you know, uh, will go down. Um, we will, uh, um, well, I will take, you know, personal pride in the fact that we've been able to reduce the number of educators of color who have left the district, in spite of everything that has happened, you know, from, from from, from twenty nineteen um, to now. You know, and in addition to the pandemic, you know, as I'm talking about, also in the wake of the death of George Floyd, you know, in the Black Lives Matter movement, you know, the January sixth. I mean, you know, you name it, and all the different, all the different, different things that uh, that society has sort of told us, has, has, you know, the vaccine mandate has been running educators of color from the, you know, uh, uh, from the workforce. Uh, the fact that we've been able to, you know, uh, to actually reduce that, you know, that number here in the BPS um, is a credit to the work of the office.
And Mr. Martin, in sort of full uh, circle to our, our earliest conversation this evening, you know, I'm like a firm believer that everything we do with adults is in parallel process to what we do with young people. And so what you're describing is what we were talking about with our issues of chronic absenteeism, right? It's like creating the sense of belonging and for people to feel like there is purpose and that they are seen and that they are known. Um, and so kudos to you for creating that space and obviously uh, turning the tide, uh, particularly for folks of color in the, the workforce. Um, so yeah, thank you. I will, will say, I guess since we're still full circle, there are, there are ways that we can use Essar funds to in, to incentivize folks to stay in the workforce in our hardest-to-staff positions. And um, I know we're gonna get a more robust update about your plan, Superintendent, with that, that funding, but you know, I'm all about getting money in the pockets of folks. And so, and so, you know, this is just one way, particularly in our hardest-to-staff positions, which oftentimes are in either communities uh, with high concentrations of vulnerability or in positions that we know are often serving, uh, often are held by folks of color in the workforce as well. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
And I'll just add, if I may, we did, we, we did apply to the Department of Ed back in September for um, for a funding opportunity through the Teacher Diversification Grant um, for, for signing bonuses for this upcoming uh, um, hiring season and for uh, and for relocation support, which is something else that we have, that we have, um, that we have heard about, you know, as we're, as we're making the rounds outside of, outside of New England. Now, we have yet to get, uh, to get a response uh, from the state, and you know how that goes. I would love to get an answer sooner, you know, than later, so we can actually take full advantage of the funds. Uh, so if, you know, if, if you're able to help us and, you know, and, and sort of nudging the department along, uh, we'll take it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your presentation. We look forward to continuing this conversation and hearing your next update. Um, we'll now move on to public comments on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Thank you. New business? There's no new business. That concludes our business for this evening. The next virtual school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, November sixteenth at five P M. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a me, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins? Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera? Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Bye, everyone. Bye.